Good evening and welcome to the June 13th meeting of the Glendale City Council, being called to order at 6:04 PM. May we have roll call, please?
Yes, council members, Azadrian.
Here.
Divine.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Brotman.
Here. And would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing for our invocation. And we have the venerable Todd Leonard.
Please bow your heads. God, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. Where there is sadness, joy. O divine one, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. You may be seated. Okay, may we have your report, please, Madam Clerk?
The agenda for the June 13, 2023, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, June 8, 2023, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And what is next?
Next are presentations and appointments. A, agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, June 20. The regular meetings for City Council and Housing Authority on June 38, 2023 have been canceled. The next regular meeting will be held on June 27, 2023. And on June 20, there is council in the community at the Pacific Edison Community Center.
Thank you. Does staff want to say anything about the council in your neighborhood? Or should we?
We can.
Or should we wait till? Well, wait a minute. If you want to just explain what it is for the public, so people understand. Okay, and what is next?
Next is World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, June 15, 2023. It's a proclamation.
Okay. And June 15 is an important date that we want to recognize, and so we have... Oh, I thought we had Lieutenant Josh Wofford, but we've been blessed with Andrew Jenks.
I'm subbing in, Mr. Mayor.
You're subbing? Okay. And Dr. Adria Navarro. Okay, and...
Good evening, Mr. Brotman, Mayor Brotman. My name is Eileen Asayan. I'm the Community Services Supervisor overseeing Senior Services Unit for the Parks Department. And today, we have a small presentation for you to bring awareness for today. And Adria will do the presentation for you.
Okay. Let me first recite the proclamation, okay? And then we can listen to your presentation. So, the proclamation reads, "Whereas older adults deserve to be treated with respect and dignity and valued as contributing members of society, and whereas in 2006, the International Network for the Prevention of Elder Abuse, in support of the United Nations International Plan of Action, proclaimed a day to recognize the significance of elder abuse as a public health and human rights issue. And whereas 2023 marks the 17th Annual World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, its recognition will promote a better understanding of abuse and neglect of older adults. And whereas elder abuse has a significant impact on the lives of older adults and families, and is not limited to race, gender, culture, or circumstance, and regardless of whether the abuse is physical, emotional, sexual, financial, or neglect. And whereas preventing abuse of older adults through maintaining and improving social and health services such as housing, income security, and safety will improve the quality of life. And whereas there is respect for human rights, equality, and justice... I'm sorry. Whereas where there is respect for human rights, equality, and justice, there can be no abuse. Now therefore, I, Daniel Brotman, Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby proclaim June 15, 2023, World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, and encourage all Glendale residents to join this global movement to promote the rights of older adults and put an end to abuse in all forms." And now we will look forward to your presentation.
They say dead air, right?
Yeah, oh, here we go.
We'll get this...
Okay, very good. All right.
Thank you. Which one? This one? Okay, great. So I think the proclamation... Actually, let me start by saying I'm Adria Navarro, and I work with Verdugo Hills Hospital, USC Verdugo Hills Hospital. I've been a longtime social worker. I have a doctorate in gerontology. And right when I entered my gerontology program, it was 2006, which you mentioned on the proclamation. So I was brought into, kind of swept into, the research and a lot of the global and international attention to elder abuse, and it was really a privilege to meet these folks. So, there's a few facts here to tell you a little bit about this day. Elizabeth Podnick from Toronto, Canada, was really the one who spearhanded this. And she really felt that we, as a whole society, need to work together. And today, I was on the National Center for Elder Abuse website, which actually is awarded from the Administration for Community Living to USC, so I have a real connection there. But there was a wonderful quote from the book, "The Age of Uncertainty", and it says, "There are no great men, only great committees." And I thought, how apropos to come today to ask you all for your attention and to work together with community to raise awareness of elder abuse. You know, when we think about public health crises, we actually have now added elder mistreatment, elder abuse to this area. So really, it's so widespread and yet so hidden. They estimate that 5 million older adults experience abuse, neglect, or exploitation. One of the things I learned about elder abuse is that the definition is such a wide umbrella of things. So we know people that are isolating and not taking care of themselves, and we might call that self-neglect. We also know of family members who have decided that they should get their inheritance now, that their loved one is alive, right? So there span so many different situations. Good data now shows it might be as much as $36 billion that older adults are losing every year. And out of all the cases of abuse going on, only like 1 in 24 cases actually reaches any kind of our law enforcement or our adult protective services, social service providers. Kind of calm down a little bit. But I won't read these all, but there are several types here of elder abuse. So again, I like to point out that neglect is not just somebody not getting the care that they need, it's also those of us that can't take care of ourselves. And so keeping that in mind. I think we understand the others. Psychological abuse is not a mandated reporting item, but we see this constantly. People mistreated in how they're maybe threatened, that if they don't do what their family wants, they'll be put in a nursing home. This is psychological abuse. So I think we together, kind of work together to understand and recognize, you know, what is elder abuse. So here, for those of you looking, we have the reporting lines for our local area. Adult Protective Services, it's funny, today I was in a needs assessment meeting, and we're looking at what we should be doing for seniors. And one person said, "Oh, Adult Protective Services, they really don't have, you know, they don't do enough." And I would just encourage everyone to keep reporting anytime you have a suspicion, because that builds a case. That really helps us when we look down the road. Maybe 10 people thought there was abuse. So keep reporting. If the person is in long-term care, report to the ombudsman, long-term care ombudsman. And we have such a wealth of resources in Glendale. We were talking today about all the hospitals that have services, and of course, our Glendale Senior Services, where we work together to prevent, so that we don't have seniors that go through this. So I'll turn it over to you, Ken Jenks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just to quickly tell the police department's role in this, it's really just part of a partnership with Community Services and Parks and our other resources within the city. Obviously, our role is to investigate any criminal activity when it comes to elder abuse. But a big part of what we do is our Senior Scam Stoppers events. And that's really an attempt to prevent scams. And I'm sure you've all heard of various telephone scams, or mail scams, or knock-on-your-door scams that happen. So we get out to our seniors as much as we can and educate them to be a little cautious and to think twice before you maybe hand over your bank account information, and really to prevent those crimes before they happen. So we're just one small part in the collaborative effort, and we're proud to be a big part of the Elder Abuse Day. So thank you for the proclamation.
Thank you.
We do have some resources that we placed in the back for anybody that would like to take. Thank you.
Okay. And don't go away, because I'm going to bring the proclamation down, and we'll take a photo.
Is there any one-two take?
We need a photo, and we need it on social media, or it doesn't exist. Okay. One more. Thank you very much. Thank you. Malcolm, okay? He's okay? All right, we're worried about you, Malcolm. We didn't see you. Oh, our photographer here. Okay, what is next?
Next are consent items, including minutes. Following our routine, I may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll move the consent items.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we have no public comments.
No public comments.
Okay, let's have a roll call then, please.
Council members, Azadrian.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Brotman.
Yes.
Okay, and next is...
Next are City Council and staff comments.
Okay. So I'll turn to my colleagues first. Any comments? No? Councilmember Najarian?
I did have some comments, but I think I left them in my office.
Uh-oh.
If you pass, give me a pass.
You're going to go get them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless there's anyone else willing to speak.
Okay. Councilmember Kasakian.
Just briefly, I had the opportunity to attend at Verdugo Park this weekend the International Children's Day Festival that was organized. It seems as though we've had a few of these there. We had one right around Easter. And then this was the second one, obviously coinciding with the date for International Children's Day. Great event. Congratulations to the organizers. And also had the opportunity last week to attend the high school graduation at my alma mater, Glendale High School. And I have to say that it was a very impressive group of young men and women, future leaders of Glendale. The class president, the ASP president, the keynote speaker from the students, were all young women. And so just looking at all these graduates and the wonderful work that's being done to prepare them for, I don't want to call it the real world, because they're in the real world, but life after high school, I can only say that the future looks bright. So congratulations to GSD and GHS specifically.
Yes. Councilmember Satrion.
Okay, for now.
You're okay for now? I just have one thing, and could you put up the slide on the City Data Alliance? I just wanted to share that, as I've mentioned before, we are now part of something called the City Data Alliance Accelerator Program. This is being supported by Bloomberg Philanthropies and Johns Hopkins University. And I attended a convening of mayors a few weeks ago in Baltimore to kick that off. I wanted to mention that folks from Bloomberg's group called Government Excellence, Center for Government Excellence, I think, or GovX, came out, and we had a local kickoff meeting here with staff. And we agreed on a vision statement. So I wanted to share here the vision statement, because this is an important expression of what we are going to be working on. So I'll just read it. It says, "We believe that data is one of the most valuable tools for effective public administration and management." No. This is not it, is it? Oh, this is the public statement of commitment. I wanted our vision statement. Is that not what they gave you?
This is what we received.
Okay. Well, I'll read this, but this is not the vision statement. So next, next week maybe I'll put up the vision statement, or two weeks from now when we're here next. So this is a public statement of commitment that actually all the mayors signed on to. It says, "We believe data is one of the most valuable tools for effective public sector administration and management. We believe in leveraging data and increasing the capacity of our government to understand resident needs and inform solutions that move our cities forward. Together, we commit to utilizing data for the public good, today, tomorrow, and for generations to come, so that local governments can be bolder, act faster, and make a meaningful difference for the people we serve. As participants of the Bloomberg Philanthropies Data City Alliance, our cities will deploy data to meet resident needs, solve citywide challenges, and improve intergovernmental operations. We will use data to track progress and measure impact. We will support our cities to cultivate a culture of data-informed decision-making to effectuate lasting change." Again, this is the public statement that all the mayors signed on to. We developed our own vision statement, which I will share with my colleagues and the public in two weeks. Thank you. Does staff have any comments? Do you want to say something about the council in your neighborhood?
Yes, Mayor Brotman. As you noted, council in your neighborhood, after the pandemic, we had done this before with previous councils. And per then-Mayor Kasakian's request, we restarted the program. We held one council in your neighborhood previously, when Mr. Kasakian was the mayor. And the next one, as was read into record, will be held next Tuesday, June 20, at Pacific Edison Community Center. This is a means for our community members who are not able to attend council meetings on a regular basis, so that we take council to their neighborhood. And council cannot take actions during these meetings, but individuals can share their thoughts, comments with council members. And currently, as of today, we have three items, agendas for that day, starting with council member elections, districting process. And then Parks and Community Services will go over the recreational summer programs. And then, from our library, Arts and Culture will cover the public arts update. We may be able to add a couple more items as the date comes closer, but it's, like I said, intended to be more convenient for community members to attend. And it will be at 6 o'clock at Pacific Edison.
Okay, and I want to thank Councilmember Kasakian, then Mayor, for bringing this back. We did our first one, as you said, in the Rancho neighborhood. This one will be at Pacific Edison, Pacific Park, Pacific Edison. And we are planning one or two more. I don't think we have the locations yet, but we are hoping to get one or two more over the course of this next year. So I think this is great for us to go out and see people in their neighborhoods. Okay. What's that?
I'm back.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry, you're back?
Did everyone else speak?
Everyone else spoke, and we're now ready for you.
So, hi, everyone. A couple things I need to talk about. First is, this Friday is going to be the opening of the new Metro Regional Connector subway line. It ties in all of our north-south and east-west rail lines through downtown Los Angeles. There's three incredibly beautiful new stations with artwork at the Grand Avenue, right by Disney Hall, at the historic Broadway location, and then in Little Tokyo. So this Friday is going to be the opening, and there will be free rides on the metro system through Father's Day, which is the 18th, Sunday. And it is something that's very exciting. We're going to have people from the White House coming in, and perhaps the governor. It's going to be a very exciting opportunity. Metro also heard good news that the federal government is going to be issuing a grant in the sum of $38.3 million going towards the Doran Street Crossing. Now, the Doran Street Crossing, if you don't know it, it's at San Fernando and Doran. It's a very, it's the, if not the, most dangerous crossing, rail crossing. It's in the top three. And it's dangerous because there's a short distance between San Fernando Road on one side of the tracks and San Fernando on Glendale's side. There's a lot of heavy trucks that go back and forth. It's a turn in the tracks. It is obscured by the shade of the freeway, so engineers coming around can't see what's in front of them. There is a propane facility right there at the corner. And if you can imagine what would happen in a serious accident, that propane facility would go up like a bomb and perhaps incinerate those folks on the freeway that are just a few hundred feet away. So staff has been working on this for years. We've been trying to get some funding. When I was in Washington about two months ago, I had an opportunity to meet with Federal Railroad Administration and Senator Padilla. And he played a big role in getting this money for us, so I'm very happy about that. For the B-line, Metro has adopted, will be adopting its budget this week and next. We have a challenge in our B-line operation funds. We had a very ambitious plan that we worked on with Martha and Yazdan. They didn't go for that, but we were able to get another $2 million that is shared between Burbank, Glendale, and Pasadena. We're already getting $6 million a year. That's going to be $8 million a year with an adjustment for the Consumer Price Index, so that will increase. Our net from that is going to be, we're going to be increasing from $800,000 to $1.1 million going towards the operations. Plus, in fiscal year '24, we're getting $5 million from the call for projects to purchase five vehicles and implement electric vehicles, and we talked about this before, and implement infrastructure improvements. So that's good news on that front. I missed you all last week. I was at the International Transit Conference. And I assure you, as I was sitting in the conference, I said, "Boy, our mayor would be very happy with the attitude that globally the cities are taking with regard to zero emission vehicles, with regard to equity, with regard to environmental justice throughout the world." So it's not something that's just happening in our backyard. It's something around the world that's happening. So that was very, that was very heartening. Yeah, so something happened last Tuesday. I heard about it overseas. I watched a lot of video that was taken. I watched some social media. I heard some of our reports from our officers, our police chief and our city manager. Some of us have made statements on this, some have not. I felt it was time to make a statement. Parents play a vital role in their children's education, and it's crucial to support their right to choose what is best for their child's schooling. Each child is unique, with individual needs, interests, and learning styles. And parents are in the best position to understand and address those requirements. Parents know their children better than anyone else. They have insights into their child's strengths, weaknesses, and interests that no teacher, no principal, or school board member, or state legislator has. By allowing parents to choose the right schooling for their child, we acknowledge and respect their expertise. Schools must meet the expectations of parents and deliver positive outcomes to retain... Schools must meet the expectations of parents and deliver positive outcomes to retain their trust and the enrollment. This accountability fosters continuous improvement and ensures that children receive the education that they deserve. Supporting the parent's right to choose what is right for their children in school is essential for the overall success and well-being of each child. By empowering parents, we recognize their expertise, foster diversity, encourage accountability, and promote active engagement. This approach not only benefits individual children, but strengthens the educational system as a whole. Parents have the right and responsibility to be involved in their children's education, including discussions about sex education. As a leader of this city with close ties to the Armenian community, I'm Armenian, obviously, as a former GUSD parent and as a grandparent whose grandchild might enter GUSD, I take deep offense of those who slander concerned Armenian parents who were present at the GUSD meeting as being bigots and white supremacists. And I haven't spoken to any of you, so just, you know, just a disclaimer. These parents, mostly immigrant or first generation, have seen the danger of controlling governments of communism and socialism, which dictates and dictated to them what they can and cannot do with their children. These parents came to the U.S. for freedom, for the liberty to raise their children and have them taught appropriately. They are not bigots. They are not white supremacists. They cherish family values and religious faith. These are tenants that have kept the Armenian identity and nation intact for thousands of years in the face of overwhelming odds. And we see that happening today as we speak in Armenia and in Artsakh. For these parents to be insulted as bigots and vilified is a travesty that I cannot stand for. Remarks by many of our elected officials and others have now led to hate crimes against Armenians. So far, one person's vehicle suffered thousands of dollars of damage with racial epithets etched into it merely because he had an Armenian flag in the window. Words are important, and I wish some electeds felt so too. Why was there no outrage over the actions of verified Antifa foot soldiers? Why no outrage over the Revolutionary Communist Party? By the way, their professed motto is "Fight the power and transform the people for revolution." I support Armenian parents, Armenian families, and Armenian children, and any others who share their values, and I will fight for their rights anytime and anywhere. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All right. I was not going to say anything about Tuesday, but I just want to say thank you. Excuse me. We'll have decorum here, okay? I was going to say thank you to Chief Sid and the entire Glendale Police Department for keeping everyone safe and maintaining, for the most part, a peaceful demonstration, counter-demonstration, whatever you want to call it. It was mostly well, well-controlled. And there were some punches thrown, but we understand there were no serious injuries. It could have been much, much worse. So I want to thank our police department, the men and women who serve us and keep us safe. We really, really appreciate the work you do.
I was going to hold my comments until, because I know that there's an item later in the agenda for it. But I do want to emphasize that beyond just the parents gathering and our community members gathering, there were extremists from the outside who came into our city with the intent to, with, with, with the intent to disrupt, to create violence. I've spoken to our chief. After the arrests were made, there were individuals that were associated with the Antifa group. There were individuals associated with the Proud Boys who came in to take over our city and create the violence that they did. It is every citizen's right, including the parents, who need to create an inclusive environment, but violence is never the answer. And I want to emphasize that I've also checked with our chief. There has, none of the arrests were Glendale parents, and I want to acknowledge that. In the last week, there were different hate crimes that took place. There were antisemitic messages that were dropped off at people's homes. There were assaults made to LGBTQ community members, as well as the remarks that Mr. Najarian made about the Armenian car. The Armenian community is, is and continues to be part of the hate crimes that come to our community. And so I think it is all of our responsibilities as leaders to ensure that we're creating a space that protects the rights of those who want to voice their opinion in a very civil and well-thought-out manner. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, if there are no further comments, what is next?
Next are community event announcements. Three minutes. We have one card.
We have one card. Mr. Jordan Henry. This is a three-minute community event announcement.
Could this come up, please? Is there a way to raise this?
Only the microphone.
I submitted a flyer to be shown on the screen. Is it on the broadcast? No, is it on the, there we go. Thank you. Hi, thank you, members of the community, members of Glendale. Thank you, City Council, for hearing my event announcement today. I do represent a group called Glendale Parents United. There are hundreds, hundreds of us who, who are active members of this group, who are actively seeking for the district to recognize, to listen, to, to, to respond to our many, many comments that we have made to public officials at GUSD over the last several months. We are meeting on June 20th for the last school board meeting of 2023 this year, this school year. We are opposing specific policies, specific curricula that the school board has adopted that violate not only our personal, our, our personal and private morals, but also our constitutional rights. The same constitutional rights that everybody in this room, everybody in this country, all share. You may disagree with us. You may wish to protest against us. However, we are fundamentally arguing for the parental rights and the rights of minors to be protected against a totalitarian, a totalitarian government that we are, that we are currently living under in the state of California, in the Los, in Los Angeles County and Glendale. Many extremely inappropriate things have been taught by our teachers. Not all the teachers. It's a minority of teachers. Most teachers are very, very good people. But a minority of extremist teachers have exposed minors to concepts that are absolutely inappropriate. They have done so without the permission of the parents. They have violated the privacy of those students and the privacy of those families. They currently are at Glendale. They're currently allowing girls to change in front, biological girls to change in front of biological coaches and vice versa. They call this inclusion. They do not inform parents at all.
Okay.
Please come on June 20th and support Glendale Parents United.
Time is up. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Before we move on, let me just make it clear that the city does not support this or endorse this gathering. I do not support or endorse this gathering. I hope parents will get the facts and not fall for the disinformation tactics that are being used. Excuse me. Okay, listen clearly. Listen clearly. Okay, I am going to give a warning. If I continue to hear these outbursts. I did not, I did not interrupt Mr. Henry, and I expect not to be interrupted by this crowd. I will speak. Okay, we are going to take a recess. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Let me be clear. Outbursts will not be tolerated. I've given a warning now. I'm going to speak. If we continue to get disrupted, I'm going to call a recess. I will ask the police department to clear the room, and we will resume when we have people who are willing to follow basic decorum. Okay, so as I was saying, I hope that parents will get the facts and not fall for the disinformation tactics that are being used to manipulate people. Glendale Unified School District has an information page called gusd.net info. You can get all the facts there. If you have questions, talk to your teacher, or your children's teachers, I mean. Talk to the school principal or the GUSD administration, including Dr. Ekjian. If you are not satisfied, talk to your school board elected representative. And if the issue lies with the state, talk to your state electeds. You have the right to protest, but if you're interested in solving problems, then direct communication is best. Okay, what is next?
Next are action items. Action item A, Public Works Regarding Levy of Annual Assessment and Preparation of the Engineers' Report for Fiscal Year 2023. 2024 for the North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District. One, Resolution Initiating the Fiscal Year 2023-24 Levy of Annual Assessment and Ordering the preparation of the Engineers' Report. Two, Resolution Preliminary Approving, Prelimarily Approving the Engineers' Report for the Fiscal Year 2023-24 Levy and Collection of Annual Assessments. Three, Resolution Declaring the City Council's Intention to Levy and Collect the Annual Assessment for the Fiscal Year 2023-24.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian.
This is Mayor Brotman, member of City Council. I'm going to invite Shay Eccleston Banwar, Senior Public Works Manager, to present this item for your consideration.
Good evening, Mayor Brotman, members of the City Council. My name is Shay Eccleston Banwar, and I'm a Senior Public Works Manager with the Public Works Department. I have a brief presentation here on the annual levy of the North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District. The district was formed back in January 2007 after a vote of the property owners in the area. It was determined that the property owners receive a special benefit from improvements and maintenance within the district. And those improvements include landscaping, utilities, tree maintenance, and litter and debris collection. This is a map of the district, so you can see it's, it's essentially between San Fernando Road and the I-5 freeway just north of the SR-134. So the area in red is Zone A. The green area below Zone A is B. And then C is yellow, D is the blue area, and E is the purple area, which is predominantly Glendale water and power property. For the assessment, this year, we are recommending a total assessment of $70,000, which is slightly less year, slightly less than last year. Essentially, the way the rate is calculated is the total amount of the benefit for each zone is distributed amongst all the commercial property owners based off how much acres they possess. And then that's the amount that's sent to the county to levy against their property tax. So the purpose of this meeting right now is actually just to schedule the hearing, which will take place in July. So there are three resolutions for your consideration. The first is to order the preparation of the Engineers' Report. The Engineers' Report essentially shows how much each parcel is going to pay in the upcoming fiscal year. And then also to preliminary approve the draft Engineers' Report and to give notice for the, the next, the hearing at the next City Council meeting, which is July 11th, 2023.
Thank you.
That's it. We'll, we'll be back in a month to do the hearing.
Okay. Any questions for my colleagues?
No. Go ahead. I'll move 8A, 1, 2, and 3.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Devine, seconded by Councilmember Najarian. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadrian.
Yes.
Devine. Asakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Brotman.
Yes. And our next item?
Our next item is action item B, Public Works Regarding Award of Contract for the B-line Fixed Route and Dial-A-Ride Transit Services Contract. One, Resolution Dispensing Competitive Bidding and Authorizing the City Manager or His Designate to Execute a Contract with MV Transportation, Inc. for the operation and maintenance of the city, city's B-line fixed route and dial-a-ride transit services in a not-to-exceed amount of $76,506,506,800 for a six-year term with two, two-year extension options. If the first option to extend is exercised, the amount will not exceed $106,245,519 for a total eight-year term. And if the second option to extend is exercised, the amount will not exceed $137,828,127 for a total 10-year term.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Galanian.
Mayor Brotman, member of City Council. Martha DeAndrea, our transit manager, will present this item and be available. will present this item and be available to respond to your questions along with Mr. Mroni, Director of Public Works.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Brotman and Councilmembers. Let me get the... Tonight, we are requesting approval for the Beeline and Dial-A-Ride Transit Operations and Maintenance Contract. The presentation will highlight the procurement process, the contractor selection, and final recommendation. The City of Glendale has provided transit services for over 28 years after the passage of the first county transportation sales tax measure, Proposition A. The Glendale Beeline and Dial-A-Ride Services provide mobility for our residents, especially our transit-dependent older adults and students and employees of local Glendale businesses. The Beeline Fixed Route Service offers nine routes that connect riders to schools, businesses, hospitals, doctors' offices, parks, and older adult meal sites and activity centers. The Beeline operates with 41 city-owned buses and three LCF shuttle buses for a total of 44 CNG buses. In fiscal year 2022, Beeline had over 517,000 boardings. For fiscal year 2023, boardings are currently 40% higher than fiscal year 2022. Glendale also operates the Dial-A-Ride Demand Response Paratransit Service for Glendale residents that are 65 or older and persons with disabilities of any age. Dial-A-Ride serves Glendale, La Quinta, Flint Ridge, and unincorporated LA County communities of La Crescenta and Montrose. The Dial-A-Ride fleet is composed of 10 vehicles, including minivans and cutaways. A service contractor operates and maintains the city-owned vehicles for both the Beeline and Dial-A-Ride programs. The service contract is set to expire on June 30, 2023, requiring a procurement to select a contractor to operate both services. The procurement method selected. A request for proposals, RFP, is the preferred procurement method for the Federal Transit Administration, FTA, service contracts following circular 4221F. An RFP is based on selection criteria of not lowest bid since the performance risk, i.e. not providing service, requires an RFP where experience and past performance play a dominant role that supersedes low price. In addition to the city's RFP requirements, the federalized RFP includes the incorporation of federal clauses, including protest procedures, restrictions on lobbying, and a disadvantaged business enterprise DBE goal of 3.6%, requiring a good faith effort. The RFP highlights include both Beeline and Dial-A-Ride Services under one contract since the city-owned Beeline Bus Maintenance Facility was built to house a single contractor. Having one contractor allows for shared resources and reduces operating costs through economies of scale. The scope of work for both Beeline and Dial-A-Ride Services includes service guidelines and parameters, personnel and staffing levels, key personnel, employee standards and policies, labor agreements, service quality, and facility maintenance. With Beeline's transition to battery electric buses, the RFP required company electrification experience, a new assistant general manager position with experience with electrification, and bus operator and maintenance employee training. The RFP also reduced Dial-A-Ride trips due to the pandemic effect on ridership. New facility maintenance costs, including janitorial services, landscaping services, waste services, and building and equipment maintenance, was included. And finally, increased labor and benefit costs due to a signed Teamsters Local 848 Agreement. The labor agreement brings Glendale in line with other transit agencies in Los Angeles County. The Glendale Transit contract is very flexible. The Beeline service accounts for 92% of the entire contract. Deployment of hours based on service demand as established by the city. Service levels can increase and decrease. And finally, the city may terminate the contract for convenience with a minimum 60 days' notice. The RFP process. The RFP was issued on March 2, 2023. A total of six firms attended the virtual pre-proposal meeting, and four firms attended the in-person facility and fleet inspection site visit. Staff responded to 125 questions and issued addenda. Four firms requested information and clarification. The proposal due date was extended twice for a total of a two-month proposal submission timeline. Two proposals were received by the due date, Keolis and MV Transportation. Both proposals are highly qualified firms with extensive experience in operating transit services. Keolis is an international, national company that is headquartered in France with its U.S. subsidiary headquartered in Massachusetts. Keolis has worldwide operations and operates 23,000 vehicles and provided 3 billion passenger trips. Local service contracts include Foothill Transit, Orange County Transportation Authority, OCTA, and Victor Valley Transit Authority. MV Transportation is also an international, national company that started in California but is now headquartered in Texas and operates in 26 states and Canada and has 20,000 team members. Local service contracts include Antelope Valley Transit Authority, ABTA, the Los Angeles Department of Transportation, LEDOT Transit, and Santa Clarita Transit. Proposal evaluation. The experienced election panel included the general manager of the Antelope Valley Transit Authority, ABTA, the first all-electric transit fleet in the nation, the transit manager of the City of Redondo Beach, Beach Cities Transit, the marketing and operations manager for Foothill Transit, and Glendale's transit manager. The panel has extensive experience with contracted services and experience with zero-emission bus deployment and operations. The panel conducted proposer interviews and evaluated and scored the proposals based on the evaluation criteria. Individual scores were added together in average to provide the final ranking. The table details the evaluation criteria and the final scoring for each proposer. The evaluation criteria consisted of three parts. Part one included the background, affirmations, certifications, and financial sustainability, five points. Part two, qualifications and technical proposal, 65 points. This is the most important section, which scores a proposal's technical capacity and operations, vehicle maintenance, facilities and equipment, and administration. This section also includes experience and references. Part three is the price proposal, incentives and staffing plan, 40 points. This section includes price proposal, staffing plan, and bidding preference points for retention of employees. The total possible points, four total possible points of 110. Keolis received 70, MV Transportation 99 points. The selected proposer, MV Transportation, had the highest score and lowest cost proposal, earning 99 points out of 110 possible. MV Transportation's proposal received high marks for providing technology enhancements such as Mobile Eye Collision Avoidance System, technology identifies impending collision and notifies the operator with an auditory warning, Drive Cam, an onboard camera system with continuous video recording allowing safety staff to identify trends and unsafe behaviors that require immediate attention, and a new Dial-A-Ride passenger portal allowing passengers to confirm, cancel, or book trips online. MV proposed an experienced, fully-staffed local management team. MV's proposal included all key personnel required in the RFP, including a new assistant general manager that brings zero-emission service deployment experience. MV demonstrated strong employee relations with a low employee turnover, less than 6% over last year. The salaries and benefits were determined by the collective bargaining agreement with Teamsters Local 848, representing bus operators, dispatchers, reservationists, and road supervisors. MV provided an excellent maintenance program and a strong safety and training programs. MV Transportation is the incumbent contractor and has operated the Beeline Fixed Route Service for 22 years and the Dial-A-Ride for seven years. MV has been an excellent partner in providing transit services to Glendale. The local team and employees are committed to serving the public. Forty-three of the 101 current employees have been serving the Glendale community for over 10 years. The regional and corporate team has been accessible and responsive to our needs. MV provided cost discounts at the city's request during the economic downturns and the pandemic. MV instigated additional safety and cleaning measures and kept Glendale workforce intact during the pandemic. And finally, and most importantly, Glendale is the only agency in the region that had a full workforce, including drivers which are at an industry-wide shortage, operating services without cancellation and disruptions during the pandemic and post-pandemic. MV Transportation had the lowest cost proposal, and after cost review and negotiation, MV Transportation provided a lower-priced best and final offer. The pre-RFP price analysis, similar to an engineer's cost estimate, estimated a cost of $13.9 million for year one. That included a 20% increase from the current year to account for the increased contract costs other transit agencies in the region experienced. MV's cost is only about 10% higher than the current rates and $2.9 million lower than the price analysis estimate. This includes a labor agreement that increases both wages and benefits, the new electrification position, and facility maintenance costs. Compared to Keolis, there is a $14.3 million difference between MV and Keolis over the six-year contract. This is equal to one year of Beeline operation costs. In closing, our Beeline and Dial-A-Ride riders depend on our transit services for mobility. After an extensive procurement process, MV Transportation provided an operations and maintenance package that improves on the current operations and prepares us for the electrification of our Beeline fleet at a very fair price. Staff recommends a ward of a six-year plus two two-year extensions of MV Transportation, Inc. to operate Beeline and Dial-A-Ride Services and maintain their fleets. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you. I know Councilmember Asatrian has some questions.
So this is actually reminding me of my first meeting, the first item, first meeting. Glendale Water and Power at the time had brought forth an RFP, which I voted no on. This contract is due June 30, and we are getting it just weeks before it's up. I'm trying to process why, when we knew that this was coming to us and we were supposed to vote, why we're getting it a couple of weeks before the contract's expiring. We've known that this contract's going to expire, correct?
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Councilmember Asatrian. We knew that this was expiring at the end of the current fiscal year, and staff began working on this contract, developing the RFP about six months ago. Any RFP that we put together takes about six months, on average, to take from inception to completion. The RFP was completed and released. It was started in January of last year, and it was released on March 2 of this year. We had set a month for its evaluation, and due to a couple of requests that came in, we extended it because of the extensive nature of the services involved. So that took it to end of April. And here we are, after the interviews and everything, recommending its adoption. So it took about six months, which is an average length of time for any RFP.
So I know I asked you this earlier today. You had noted that you released this RFP March 2, and your email noted that the responses were received April 26. I have some serious concerns about the number of bidders and how much we're actually allocating to this project. How would this have worked if it was a new bidder that came in and got the contract when this project's supposed to start July 1? How would the transition happen in two weeks?
So Councilmember Asatrian, first of all, in terms of the number of bidders, a contract of this size, there are not that many companies that can actually submit proposals for this. As was mentioned, there were about four companies that were interested and attended the pre-proposal meeting, which was non-mandatory, and only two of them decided to submit, which is not unusual. There was a recent procurement for Orange County Transportation Authority, which also, for the same services, and also saw only two bidders applying. So the number of bidders are not unusual. And as Mr. Andrea mentioned, these are based on qualifications. They're not based on the low cost. So the qualification is taken into account in evaluating the services. Now, if the services were determined to be somebody who is new to this system, then we would negotiate with the incumbent in terms of a transition period so that we could have a smooth transition and handoff, basically, between the two systems, between the two companies. But as it turned out in the scoring, it turned out the incumbent scored much higher than the other company, who was also extremely well-qualified.
So the March 2 through the April 26. When I read that email, I thought that that was the length of time that the RFP was open. My understanding is that there were questions that needed to be answered by March 13, and then you needed the responses in order for you to be able to answer that. There was an initial nine-day extension, then a five-day, then the full 30-day. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct, yes.
Okay. So this is not how I do business, and I don't feel comfortable with this. So I'm going to let others ask. But I would say that I don't know, city manager, what we need to do for future RFPs. But I want to make sure that the RFP process is accessible and that it has enough time for people to complete, that they're not rushing. This is a $76 million contract we're talking about. And it's for six years. This council has also made mobility as part of its priorities for the coming year. I don't know where this fits in with, you know, I keep bringing this up. I keep seeing these empty buses run up and down our streets, creating traffic. I don't know if we need to increase the frequency and the routes. These are all things that we've talked about. But, you know, I think I'm combining my questions and comments with this now. But I don't, you know, unless otherwise, I hear something, otherwise, there's no way I can support this. I would be open to gearing whether you need a year. Maybe we extend this for a year or some months for us to be able to put out a new RFP.
Other comments? Councilmember Najarian.
So I told you I've been around here a long time, right? So I was part of the original interview panel for the initial contract with MV, before you were here, before you were here, before you were here. I think I was part of the citizens panel. Did you have the three groups? Usually, it's an industry, an internal, and then like a citizens panel. Did you do that on this?
No, we did the professional.
No, we did the professionals.
Just had the industry professionals. Okay. So I know a lot of these players through Metro, obviously, and MV, I was impressed with MV back in, I guess you're saying it was 2001, so they, they were impressive. I liked their, I liked their attitude. So MV currently operates the Antelope Valley AVTA. But then when I look on the panel of professionals, one of the four is AVTA. So, isn't that a problem if someone that you have a contract with is asked to score you on your industry panel? You know what I'm saying? AV, I mean, is there a conflict there?
Is AVTA sub on this one, or no?
No.
No.
It says selection panel is AVTA, and it says, it says client of MV is AVTA.
MV is a client of AVTA, so I don't think that's a conflict. They're, they're just both using the same services. I don't see how that's a conflict. It'd be a conflict maybe if it was the other way around, but...
I know, that's kind of weird.
I mean, it's not unusual for, in any, any process like this, where there's a firm like this that has experience to be on a panel, to have other actions with a particular bidder.
Yeah, I mean, but they have a relationship. Regardless of which way it goes, one provides a service, one gets the money, and then you're asking for, on our panel, the other half of that relationship to be on the scoring. Yeah, I don't know, that just seems kind of...
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
On this very topic. Foothill Transit, were they also on the panel?
Yes.
Okay, and they are serviced by Keolis?
Correct.
So we had, on this panel, we had one operator serviced by Keolis and one serviced by MV Transportation. Did, was the scoring all done independently?
Yes.
And did Foothill Transit, who uses Keolis, score MV higher?
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe they were mad at them for some, I mean, I mean, no, but you get those sort of things. I would be happy if it was a completely unbiased industry panel. They may be very happy with MV and score them high, they might be ticked off at MV and score them low. So that was just, because when I did it 22 years ago, we didn't have those issues. And there were backup panels, we had the citizens panel, and, okay, I just, that was just a comment I wanted to make and reflect on.
Yeah, that's a good observation. I was thinking the same thing as I saw it, and then I saw Foothill and, Councilmember Devine, any comments? Councilmember Kasakian?
Yes.
Thank you. You know, I have to say that, on the surface, this seems as though it should be very routine, but then, you know, some of the points that have been raised, notwithstanding Councilmember Najarian's observation, which I guess I had missed, but the $76 million contract, the fact that this is for potentially eight years, and how rushed it was at the last minute to get this in, I think, you know, these are valid questions to bring up, and my question becomes like, how is it possible that, you know, there's only two people that compete? And I get it, the scope's larger, you're combining things, but, you know, you mentioned that there was two bidders for Orange County. My question is, who are those two bidders? Is it the same individuals? And if there was a different bidder, have we found out why someone who could service all of Orange County wasn't willing to bid on our contract?
It was the same two bidders.
So it's those two. Apparently, these two are like the, you know, the Costco and the Sam's Club of transit. I don't know, I got to tell you, I find that a little hard to believe, and if it's, if my colleagues are okay with it, I wouldn't mind having this go back to seeing who else or why we weren't able to get more bidders on a $76 million contract to run transit in the potentially, you know, the fourth-largest city in Los Angeles County.
Councilmember Devine.
I think that begs the question, what happens if we delay this?
Councilmember Devine, that's a great question, and the way I would answer that is, again, when MV became the finalist for this project, their price was $2.5 million less than our own estimate for this project, that we had estimated. Their price is only 10% higher, plus they've served the, this community for 22 years. We have a stable situation, we have about 60,000 riders that ride the buses on a monthly basis, and this is how, basically, the final recommendation came by, that this is a company that has operated and is qualified, and the price is, you know, is well within the range of our budget.
Councilmember Devine, to respond to your question, if it's council's direction to delay the award of the contract, it's more than likely that staff will have to go and negotiate, depending on the term of the contract extension, negotiate new pricing with MV, because MV submitted their bids based on a six-year contract with two-year extensions. So it's not outside the realm of being able to do it, but I, more than likely, it will require negotiation with MV.
Well, and it also seems like every time we do this, delay, 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 it costs us more money, more money, more money. I'm ready to move the item.
Okay. My comments, I, I'm prepared to support the selection of MV Transport. You know, they've done good work for us, their price is below our estimate, and in fact, it's not significantly increased from our existing contract, which is pretty remarkable in this market, where we're seeing increases of 20 and 30%. I do share the frustration that Councilmember Asatrian raised, that we get these, and it feels like there's a gun to our head. We get these at the last possible moment, and there really is no time to go back and look at anything different. And we're being told, if, you know, if we don't do it now, there're going to be all these consequences, there're going to be these additional costs. I get very frustrated, and I've, I've said that many times, and I would like to ask staff to do a better job of anticipating these timelines and getting to us a good month or two months before the contract is due, so that we feel like we're making a decision not under duress. So, having said that, I do support going forward. Councilmember Kasakian?
I may support it as well, if I had had, you know, the information that I could absorb. I mean, this is, again, a $76 million contract being brought to us at, you know, the last minute, at the 11th hour, you know, I would like to know more about, and look, the Beeline is relatively well-run, but I've received complaints from residents about fare boxes being broken, fares not being accepted. I'd like to know more about, you know, what are the reasons for this? What is the reasons for, you know, some of the routes not being, you know, if they're not having enough passengers, what is the relationship with us and MV? Do they have an obligation to tell us that it's not being well-serviced? You know, we have done deeper dives into more innocuous issues than the $76 million eight-year, potentially eight-year contract, that I'd like, you know, if, I don't see what the harm is in, you know, delaying this, whether it's for six months, as we get some more information, and then if that's, if our questions are answered, if I'm satisfied with those, then we can bring it back and vote on it, or do a one-year extension, if that's possible.
Councilmember Asatrian.
Well, I don't, this contract's expiring June 30th, so there needs to be some sort of extension, and it seems like we've all kind of shared these concerns in the past, so maybe we can come up with some calendar that says that we get these like 90 days before. We knew that this was coming, so if you knew that it was going to take six months for the RFP process, then it shouldn't have started in March. It should have started maybe late last year. So, it looks like we would need an extension of the contract, because it's up on the 30th, so.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, I completely understand your concerns and valid, as far as the timing of bringing these items to council for consideration are concerned. I assure you that it's not the intention of staff to put a quote-unquote "gun" against your head in the last-minute request for approvals. They do, staff does the best they can, considering all the other things that they need to work on. The timing, yes, could have worked better, we should have, in hindsight, started earlier, as Mr. Imroni mentioned. It did, we did start the RFP process back in January, but it does, we do know by now that historically, it takes five to six months, so we could have done a better job in bringing this forward earlier, but, you know, and I'm not making excuses, not trying to make excuses. Juggling all these items, trying to make sure that we have a balanced agenda and a full council in attendance sometimes becomes challenging, but point is well-taken. Again, we'll make every effort in the future to bring these items forward earlier in time. However, tonight, as Councilmember Asatrian mentioned, we need a direction from council, whether it's to grant an extension, with the potential of negotiating the terms of the one-year extension or six-months extension. Six months may not be enough if the intention is to reissue the RFP. So if it's a one-year, then again, we need that direction tonight, unfortunately.
And by the way, I apparently have misspoken, because when looking at my notes, with the two-year extensions, this six-year contract is way more than just $76 million. It's far more than that, it's over, in excess of $100, I think, $30 million, so...
Well, can we do this? We meet again on the 25th. This contract...
On the 27th.
On the 27th, okay. Contract expires on the 30th. Can we endeavor to get some of these questions answered in the next two weeks? Some of the issues that Councilmember Kasakian raised about service issues, other operators? What were some of your other questions?
I'd like to know who the other applicants were, or the interested parties who didn't apply, and find out what the reasoning was, and find out who can also operate, operation of this scale. I mean, look, we have two companies that are multinational companies, both headquartered out of, outside of our near vicinity, so conceivably, other companies and corporations of a similar scale can also operate it. Why one based out of Texas and another one based out of France with a subsidiary in Massachusetts, or it's US operations? So, I do have a lot of questions, and I'm sorry I'm getting worked up over it, but this is a large amount of money, and it seems as though kind of the process that it was taken for us to get here was like, well, you know, no one else will apply, or this is what it is, we'll just do this, and we'll extend it for like another potentially eight years, and I don't think that's the way we should necessarily operate, if we want to be transparent.
And Mayor Brodmann, on June 27th, we won't have full council.
We'll have, okay.
And that leaves us like a few days before this contract expires, so I don't know if we have the votes, but I would, I would like to see, for us to extend it for one year. That's where I'm at.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something?
Yes, please.
Just to reiterate, we have a legal process here. We had an RFP that was lawfully, dutifully prepared. The extended, we're in this timeline, because my understanding is a, somebody who was considering proposing requested the extension and ultimately did not submit a proposal. So we'd probably be here earlier if not for those extensions. The bidder, the proposer who was recommended, based on achieving higher scores in all categories, pretty much has successfully completed the process, and so I'm expressing concern that we have somebody who submitted, complied with all the requirements of the RFP, and then they were not going to award that with, for no reason, other than we're concerned about the timing. That was not the fault of the proposer that would be successful. So that's my recommendation, along with staff, and you're hearing it from me, the city attorneys, that we move forward with this. We can still answer the questions raised by councilmembers.
Mr. Garcia, that is not the reason. The reason is because this is going to be a potentially $140 million contract, and I had a five-minute briefing on this item, not more than that, and I have more questions. And so, you know, I apologize if this disrupts the other plans that staff has in moving forward with this, but I do need more time than the required, or the time that was given to explain this to me on this contract. You know, sure, maybe I should have asked it earlier, but I've had a very long week, as many people have, and I wasn't able to focus on this, especially with the other heavy items that we have on this agenda.
Just making my recommendation known to the full council.
Okay. If we continue this item for two weeks, I understand there are four of us in two weeks, but hopefully, we can get some questions answered between now and then. I mean, if the votes aren't there to approve this now, perhaps they will be in two weeks.
Councilmember Kasakian, are you interested in getting more information? So for me, I'm not changing my mind because of the process, and I'm not okay with the process, just like I was on my, on my first day on this dais. So if it's answers, is it just answers, or is it also the process?
It's both, but, you know, there was a, I know that we have a new Beeline service facility. I have not stepped foot in it, I have not seen it. I've toured and visited a number of other facilities during my three years here on this council, but I'd like to go visit it, I'd like to know what the issues are. You're telling me that, you know, it's not suitable for certain operations, and we need to figure out how to put a number of operations or service them in the same place. I do want to know those things firsthand, and I'd like to see a number of these questions answered. So, it's the process, it's the questions, and that's it. And size of, generally, the size of a contract. I don't think I would be, you know, principally, I guess I would be as concerned if this was a smaller dollar figure, but I think this raises a number of issues and concerns for me.
And we've punted bigger issues, such as Grayson, down the road.
True, absolutely.
For the sake of obtaining more information and digging into it quite deeply. So I would support an extension of a year, so we get all these questions answered.
But how did that turn out? Millions more money, millions, time lost, money lost, just saying, just saying.
Yeah, but, I mean, it is a large contract, and I think, you know, we need to dig into it.
Are you good with one year?
Okay.
Are you good with one year?
If that's doable, sure. Do you have a proposal?
Yeah, so I'd like to move that we give one-year extension to the current contract, and for there to be a new RFP that's placed out for this item. Could we have the RFP vote at least two months before the next time it's up?
Well, Councilmember Asatrian, staff will strive to get you that report two months before.
Well, I want to ask a question. Would we, in this case, have to cancel the RFP? And can we do that? Do we have, do we need legal grounds to do that?
Members of council, Mr. Mayor, the RFP does allow the city to terminate the RFP. My recommendation would be to continue it, so that at least we can look at that, provide you what your options are. I heard some discussion about a request to terminate the RFP and start over, I heard some other discussion about just getting more information. Perhaps we should go down that road of providing some additional information to the council before you make that determination whether to cancel. It seems premature, I mean, from what I'm hearing from all the council members, that you're not necessarily there to terminate and start over, but maybe request some additional information. The other thing, too, is you would have to direct staff to negotiate an extension, because, and then we'd have to bring that back to you, we can't just, we can't just sign an extension, because we don't, we don't know what MV will agree to.
Are extensions not baked into a contract specifically for situations like this?
They were, no. They were, we had extensions, previous extensions were at the end of the extensions, so at this point, you know, MV, I'm sure, would negotiate with us if we were to go, for example, if we were to go to another provider, they would extend with us for a short period of time, so we can make that transition, but we have to negotiate with them at this point, if that's the council's direction.
Okay, where I am is, I don't, I don't want to cancel the RFP. Where I am is I don't, I don't want to cancel the RFP. I think that's a major step. I do think that's going to cost us significantly. It could put us in a position where we don't have a contract to run the service. I don't want that to happen. I would, I would like to see us continue this in two weeks, bring it back between now and then, get some of these questions answered, perhaps get Councilmember Kasakian out to visit the facility.
Well, I'll have a list of questions.
And let's, let's try to get this wrapped up in two weeks because I do think that starting over with the RFP is going to be incredibly disruptive and costly. So I'm not in favor of doing that.
Could we, could we get the answers back in two weeks, agree today that we're going to extend the contract, we're going to go negotiate for the contract for an extension of one year, and then in two weeks, bring back a report of what our options are moving forward?
Mayor Bratman, and the city council, as Mr. Garcia mentioned, if that's council's direction, then we need a direction to say specifically that move, for staff to move ahead and go ahead and start negotiation with MV Transportation, and the terms would be for one-year extension, and we'll have to bring that report back to you again for approval.
In two weeks.
We'll, we'll try and see if we can conclude the negotiations within two weeks, yes.
Okay.
I think we have to. We have to, right? Because we can't let the contract expire. We have nothing to replace it with.
So for example, that's the reason I asked, the question I asked earlier on, if, had it been, you know, another company that got this bid, you know, how were we going to start this project July 1st in two weeks' time? And the answer to that question was that they were willing to continue working with us. So, I mean, I'm basing my assumptions off of that answer.
Okay.
And again, Mr. Mayor, just as a reminder, we will not have full council on the 27th.
Right, but we will have a call.
You will have a call, hopefully we'll have a call.
Okay. I, do we need a vote to continue it, or?
Well, I think if you want to give us some direction, a motion to direct us to negotiate an extension as well as provide the additional information, assuming we'd still have all the options open to the council on the 27th, including awarding the contract or terminating. Is that your understanding, Mr. Mayor?
That is my understanding, that we would spend the next two weeks looking at a possible one-year extension, seeing what that would look like, but keep our options open to potentially answering questions and approving this contract as is in two weeks.
That's not what we're saying here.
I think, I think we just, you know, start negotiating for the one-year extension. I think, you know, rushing it for two weeks, assuming that every answer, every question will be answered, and then being up against the deadline after, if we do not have votes on that day, we could end up in a deadlock, right? And then what do we do? It could be a two-two vote, and I'm assuming only one council member is not going to be here on the 27th. I'm not that council member, am I? Okay, all right. I'm not sure, I haven't looked at my calendar that far in advance.
Not that I have.
And then what? What happens then, right?
We've done this before. I don't understand why this is becoming an issue now. So it seems like we have the three votes for us to negotiate for a one-year contract, and then anything related to a new RFP or how we move forward beyond that, you can bring back a report.
And if that's council's direction, Mr. Mayor, and the city council, then we'll bring back a report and with the terms of the negotiated agreement with MV on the 27th, if that's council's direction.
Do we have the votes for that?
I would, I would support that.
Yes, okay. So that's my motion.
Here we are. So let's have a roll call, please. Oh, wait, we need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Devine?
No.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Bratman?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. What is next?
Next is action item C, Glendale Water and Power, regarding Glendale Water and Power annual authority for the purchase of sale of energy commodities and services. One resolution approving renewal of annual authorization for the city manager or GWP general manager or designees to enter into contracts for the purchase or sale of energy commodities and services, including the transfer of initiating and clearing broker's services not to exceed five years in duration and dispensing with competitive bidding.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Bratman, member of the city council. To participate in the energy market, we need to dispense with competitive bidding and provide timely contract approvals. GWP participates in the energy market to ensure procurement of reliable and cost-effective power to serve our commercial, business, and residential customers. The price and availability of energy-related commodities and services are in constant fluctuation until the contracts are in place. The contracts can range from the next hour and up to five years in turn. Therefore, we are recommending adopt, for city council to adopt a resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and renewing the annual authorization for the city manager or the general manager to enter into these contracts. Unless you have additional questions, Howard Wong, our GWP risk manager, as well as Mark Young and Scott Mellon are available to respond to our questions.
I'm sorry, sorry, city manager, I don't have a report on this.
Oh, you can have it.
And I didn't have the last one either, so I'm just saying. Thank you.
Okay. Well, why don't we run through it? You want to run through it, or?
What? No, I'm good.
Okay.
I just wondered if there was another copy that I could have.
Yes, I didn't realize, my apologies, that we had a PowerPoint presentation on this item.
Okay. Do we have any, any questions on this item, or can we move forward with a motion?
I'll move the item.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Then, okay. We got a second, we got a second. We just need a roll call now.
Okay. Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Bratman?
Yes. And what is next?
Next is action item D, Finance, regarding adoption of city's fiscal year 2023-2024 grant appropriations limit. One resolution adopting fiscal year 2023-24 grant appropriations limit.
Okay, Mr. Galanian.
Mayor Bratman, member of the city council. The GAN initiative established constitutional limits on the amount of tax revenue that city's governmental agencies can appropriate. This limit is calculated using appropriations from a base year and then adjusted annually using a growth factor that takes into account changes in population and the cost of living. Based on staff's calculation, the fiscal year 2324 appropriation limits for the city is $382,980,637, and the proposed appropriation subject to GAN initiative limit is $247,210,38. Therefore, the city's proposed fiscal year 2324 budget is in compliance with the state of California spending limit as established in the California Constitution. So we do recommend for city council to adopt a resolution for the fiscal year 2324 GAN appropriations limit.
Hey, thank you.
If you have any questions, Mr. Bradford and his staff are available.
I'll move 8E1.
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Bratman?
Yes. And the next and last action item?
Last action item, action item E, Finance, regarding annual Glendale Water and Power transfer. One resolution reducing the percentage of operating revenues to be transferred from Glendale Water and Power Electric to the General Reserve Fund for fiscal year 2022-2023.
Okay, Mr. Galanian.
Mayor Bratman, member of the city council, the city charter requires the transfer of 25% of the GWP annual operating electric revenues to the General Reserve Fund unless a lower percentage transfer is approved by city council. We have historically transferred an amount less than 25% by adopting a resolution setting, resolution setting a lower amount. For the current fiscal year 2223, the estimated amount to be transferred out of Electric Surplus Fund is $19,550,720. That equates to 10% of the Electric Works estimated operating revenue. Therefore, again, we recommend the council adopt a resolution reducing the percentage of operating revenue to be transferred from GWP's Electric to the General Reserve Fund for fiscal year 2223.
Okay, and just to clarify, the 10% is fixed, but the actual dollar amount could fluctuate a little bit between now and when we close our books, right?
Mayor Bratman, members of the council, that is absolutely correct. This is our estimate at this time, but it could fluctuate slightly based on the final operating revenues that are reported at the year-end.
Okay. Do any of my colleagues have questions about this? This is standard, we do this every year.
I'll move it.
Okay.
8E1.
And do we have a second?
Always been against this, but I'm going to go with.
Okay, you don't have to vote for it. Do we have a second?
I mean, I'll, I'll second it, sure.
Okay.
And by the way, I've also spoken up against the transfer, but, you know, we are doing what we are supposed to do, and it's part of the budget process, so.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
No.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Bratman?
Yes. Okay, thank you. So we move on to hearings. Can you read the first of our two hearings into the record, please?
Yes, hearing A, Finance, regarding fiscal year 2023-2024 budget hearing and adoption. One, hold a public hearing on the fiscal year 2023-2024 proposed citywide budget. Two, resolution adopting the fiscal year 2023-2024 City of Glendale budget. Three, resolution providing for the establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees of the City of Glendale covered by the Glendale Management Association memorandum of understanding, including employee relations exempt classifications. Four, resolution providing for the establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees of the City of Glendale covered by the Glendale City Employees Association memorandum of understanding, including confidential and hourly classifications. Five, resolution providing for the establishment of classification titles and compensation for appointed and elected executive-level employees of the City of Glendale. Six, resolution providing for the establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees of the City of Glendale represented by the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 18. Seven, resolution adopting the Glendale Water and Power Public Benefit Programs Plan and the Low Carbon Fuel Standard Programs Plan for fiscal years 2023-2024 and 2024-2025 and authorized agreements to implement said programs. Eight, resolution of appropriation for fiscal year 2022-2023 to transfer funds in the amount of $7.8 million from the General Fund to the Fleet Management Fund.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Galanian.
Mayor Bratman, member of the city council, it's that time of the year again, and I'm pleased to submit to you a balanced budget for fiscal year 2324. As you know, this has been a long and laborious process where all 14 departments were heavily involved, including their budget liaisons, and obviously tremendous amount of work by our budget team who are present here, and as well as participation by city council during the process that included five study sessions, and we appreciate your input, feedback, and suggestions. Just a quick recap, we started on April 25th with the first session, budget study session that covered fiscal year 2223, general fund projections, then the 2324 proposed general fund budget, as well as an update on the five-year general fund forecast. And then we spent three budget study sessions covering all 14 departments and their related budgets for every single department. And finally, at the last budget study session, we went over the public benefit programs, budget wrap-up and follow-ups that council had requested, and another update on the five-year forecast and the proposed balancing strategies that included potential sources of revenue that we will conduct research on and bring forward to council for consideration. Today's agenda, we're going to cover next fiscal year's proposed citywide budget and general fund five-year forecast, amendments of classifications and compensations, including a handful of new positions, as well as modifications to the public benefit programs and the low-carbon fuel standards, and then recommend that city council, after the public hearing, and questions that Mr. Bradford and his team and the department heads will be able to respond to, adopt the proposed budget as presented. With that, I will turn it over to Jason Bradford, our Director of Finance and Information Technology, who has a few slides to share with you.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Good evening, Mayor Bratman and members of the council. It is my pleasure to present the 2324 budget for your consideration this evening. For fiscal year 2324, we are proposing a budget of $1.172 billion, which is summarized on this slide by our various fund types, and is comprised of over 70 funds, and all of the budgets for the various funds that roll up into these categories were presented during the budget study sessions that Mr. Galanian alluded to. General fund proposed budget for the next year is $314.5 million. Increase relative to last year is due to all of our previously negotiated MOU increases for all of our labor groups. The, we are sending $8.6 million to our capital improvement program, and we are shoring up our internal service funds. The special revenue fund budget of $145.3 million is all of our grant funds. All the expenditures are reimbursed. The housing funds that was adopted this afternoon comprise these, along with our transit funds, and a whole host of other special revenue funds that make up our community program. Our capital improvement budget of $21.4 million, some of the projects funded by this for the upcoming year is the pavement management implementation program, funds set aside for land acquisition for a new park, sports complex field replacement, and pedestrian and bike plan implementation are among some of the big-ticket items. Our enterprise funds primarily consist of GWP, our electric and water utility, our Verdugo Fire Communications, and Public Works Sewer and Refuge Funds, and the proposed budget is $543.5 million. And lastly, our internal service funds, which provide services to all other departments, including fleet, building maintenance, information technology, as well as our other benefit funds, total $145.1 million. All told, we are proposing a budget of $1.172 billion. With that, I will provide a very brief recap of the general fund five-year forecast. The proposed ending fund balance for the general fund stands at $114.6 million with a reserve percentage of 36.4%. As part of our 2324 budget, we will continue to shore up our internal service funds. As I mentioned in our previous study sessions, we propose to put $7.8 million from this current fiscal year 2223 into the fleet fund, and we'll continue to do that in 2324. Another $5.8 million will go to our internal service funds, $4 million to fleet and $1.8 million to building maintenance. As I mentioned previously, the, we do have a placeholder for additional labor costs. All of the bargaining group's labor agreements expire next June, meaning any new labor agreement would take in effect in '24, '25. Obviously, all subject to meet and confer, but we have factored that into our forecast. We are funding our CIP program of $8.6 million as well. Given the challenges we see in the out-years, we are proposing to move the balance of our major rest into the general fund, starting in 2324, and for each year thereafter, and we are layering in our Section 115 trust. Even doing that, we will start dipping below 25% in fiscal year 2627. As such, council at the last study session provided... As such, council at the last study session provided us direction on a number of budget balancing strategies that will be presented to the council in the next coming months. Moving on, I will cover the amendments to our classification and compensations headed up by our HR department for our comp alignment. A consultant was hired that conducted a job matching survey that covered 13 cities and over 100 positions were benchmarked. His role in the survey, we are proposing to adjust salary ranges that were more than 9.9% below average, and based on that criteria, a total of 30 positions will be adjusted. In addition, we are creating eight new job classifications. I should note, this does not increase our authorized headcount. All told, the adjustments on this slide total $348,000. This will be absorbed in the 2324 budget, we are not adding additional budget dollars. And we are proposing, I should say, our budget does include all of our previously negotiated cost of living adjustment for all the bargaining units listed, and we are proposing to extend the GMA negotiated adjustment of a 1.25% cost of living and a 1.25% cost share reduction to appointed and elected executives. This does exclude the city manager and city attorney. And lastly, based on council input from the last session, GWP identified and removed the additional PBC programs listed below, total of five PBC programs have been removed, and three, I'm sorry, two low-carbon fuel standard programs been removed. Funds from the closed PBC program were reallocated to the Glendale Reduced Energy at Home Program, the Smart Energy, Smart Home Energy and Water Saving Upgrade Program, and Early Replacement and Electrification HVAC Pilot. And the funds from the Low Carbon Fuel Standard programs were reallocated to the upcoming EV Customer Engagement Programs and e-bike rebates program. With that, that concludes my presentation, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you. And I failed to formally open the hearing, so I am opening the hearing at 7:53 PM. We have one speaker, let me take the speaker first, and then we can go around with our questions and comments. So, Ramella Iragi. Is she here?
She says she passed.
You pass. You pass. Okay. Then, we, and we have no other comments, is that right? Nobody on the phone?
Correct, no other comments.
Okay. Then, let's go for questions. I know councilmember Asatrian, you have a number of things you wanted to bring up. Should we start with you?
Sure. I just want to get clarification on, I understand we have to pass the budget today. There are a couple of things that I'm interested in. The revenue discussion that we had is not in the projections for the next five years. And so, I think what I'd like to see as we move forward with this process is when it comes, the quarterly finance report comes back, that whatever we have decided on, the projections also reflect that, so we can look at our reserves. I also recognize that, you know, this is a conversation we had during the staff briefing, but there was a state law that went into effect in January 2023 that changes the reimbursement rates for our EMT transport services from 200 to $1,000, which is estimated at from 4 to 5 million dollars, is what I'm understanding. That would come in as new revenue. I don't know what the reimbursements would look like, when we would get them, but I want to make sure that as these financial reports are coming back, they both, we have an opportunity to actually take a look at our budget again and see how we're appropriating these funds, and then fixing the projections so we can talk about our reserves. The communications and outreach piece that I had brought forth a couple of meetings ago, would that be something that would also come during one of these financial reports? Or do you have flexibility within the vacancies if you wanted to, to change those vacancies to the communications or an outreach person? I know you had said that you have a process you want to go through. You know, I don't, I know that the police department and the fire department put out positions for community liaisons and communications, and so I don't know how that differs for CDD, economic development, or GWP, or parks.
Mayor Brothman, members of the council, councilmember Asatrian, all three points valid, starting with your last point. As I had indicated previously, I do have a plan to take a look at a comprehensive set of guidelines as to how do we communicate and conduct public outreach for all of our departments. So, that's in the, that will kick off pretty soon after we go through the budget process. It'll give us some breathing room. And then, we will bring to council after we've done our research and bring forward some options for council to consider. At that time, we will ask for appropriation, whether it's for new positions, whether it's conversion of existing positions, or hiring of consultants or staff. That will be something that we'll ask council to weigh in on. As far as the reimbursement for EMS cost is concerned for transport, our fire department, finance, and city manager's office have been working closely, coordinating the efforts. The numbers that have been thrown out there are probably for the gross amount, it doesn't take into account expenses, so the net fund that will be available or reimbursed is much less than that 4 or 5 million dollars. Regardless, when we bring the quarterly update to council for our budget for 2324, and we have a more concrete set of numbers, you will see it in that report. The first one was?
The revenues.
Revenues, yes. As you may recall, there were probably a dozen items that each department will be tasked, depending on the nature of the item, to dig deeper and conduct some research, and again, come back with feasibility of implementing any of these new resources, and if we get approval from council, then we'll include it in the quarterly or mid-year budget update.
Okay. And then, I think this is like, this would be possibly the perfect timing for me to raise this, but I know that when I first came on board, there was an issue with the insurance rates going up for our employees. I believe it was like $400 a month. This council unanimously agreed to cover until June. As we were going through the process, I recognize that that process is still going. We're looking at having something maybe back in August, or by the end of this year, of what that's going to look like.
Yes.
And so, I recognize that we are ending this not with just the balanced budget, but with a surplus, and with additional revenues that we possibly haven't accounted for. So, I'd like to put, I understand that it requires a meet and confer, but I'd like to put an item on the closed session agenda for us to be able to cover the remaining months for an insurance stipend for our employees. And then, I think my last comment would be on the process. This was my first time going through it. I have taken a look at the reports that Burbank and Pastina, for example, put out. It's much easier to digest, so I would just request that staff maybe take a look at those different ways that they do their budgeting.
Thank you.
Could an increase in the transfer from GWP cover that stuff?
Okay, okay.
Potentially. No, I'm just saying that I'm sure there's a cost, there has to be a revenue side.
There is a revenue side.
Okay.
We'll get into that.
Any comments? Do you have other comments you want to make on the budget?
I just want to thank staff, thank council for sitting through five or six, relatively long, they were at least two hours each. Mr. Mayor, you for orchestrating and running those meetings, and Jason, you and all your wonderful accountant-style business finance experts for breaking it down. It was a complicated budget, but as we went through each section, each department, each sort of area of city expenditures and services, we made sense, it made sense to us. And we are a service, we are a service provider. As a city, we don't have a product that we sell to people, it's service. It's our employees that do things, police, fire, libraries, parks, GWP, electric, you name it. That's what we do as a city. So, obviously, as we appreciate those efforts, costs rise, PERS costs increase, and I think we met our burden and met the challenge by putting forth a solid budget. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Divine.
Yeah, and I echo those words. Thank you, Jason, and your staff, you always do such a good job, and I know it takes you so long to do this, so many hours, and thanks to the city manager for making those, and you for making the meetings and the reports easy enough and simple enough so that everyone could understand. And I also want to commend you for listening to our comments for the PBC and the LCFS. I know that a lot of us, I mean, there were things on here that, you know, some of us were asking for, and you heard us, and thank you. Good job.
Councilmember Kasakian.
Again, I'll echo what my colleague said, and to staff, I know that staff in the finance department this time of year works very, very hard, putting in long hours and trying to find ways where we can continue providing the services while also balancing this budget. The situation is not ideal, I know that, you know, I don't know what everyone in the audience is thinking, I know that for some, this may be a first-time council meeting visit. For those who are, you know, Glendale residents, you should be aware that this is probably the most important meeting of the year that the city council has, because it really determines how we are able to provide the services and divide up our limited resources to maintain our quality of life. And I am concerned about, and people should be concerned about, how we're going to reduce our reserves. We always had healthy reserves, we were somewhat the envy of a lot of other cities, and I know other cities have dropped their reserves to below 10%, but I don't want to be in a situation like that. I know, I missed a meeting where we were talking about potential processes or ideas for revenue generation, for getting more funds. I watched it, and I appreciated the discussion, and hopefully, we can look into some of those items more closely. We've recovered from COVID, we're doing what we have to. Couple of questions, one is, do we know how much we're going to have to potentially pay PERS in the next, you know, we have projections, but we only know for certain what we have to pay in this year and next year, or how far out can we project what our payments to PERS will be for our retiree pension obligations?
So, councilmembers Kasakian, members of the council, we do have a five-year forecast from PERS, they give it to us. They do give it to us each year, so we know our rates, what's in the upcoming budget for the next fiscal year, and then we have a projection, which is in the five-year forecast that I just presented for the general fund and all the other funds. And we do work with actuaries that forecast our funding arc, if you will, towards our, which is our annual required contributions, so we have a pretty good picture of what that looks like, not only in the five years, but over a longer period of time, of course. It's based on a lot of assumptions, and it's subject to change year after year, based on primarily investment returns that PERS earns on its portfolio.
Well, looking at those projections during previous meetings, you know, I understand that Mr. Galanian, you and your staff, and Mr. Bradford, you're doing the best that you can with what we have, but we have to really send the message out there that there may be some difficult times still ahead. I am glad that we're able to, in spite of all that, do certain things like at least add three new positions in police and public safety, that we continue to keep Glendale a clean, safe city while we ask staff to do more with less. But I think that we need to really think about, we need to consider how we incentivize people to come work in Glendale for not necessarily the top dollar. We are mid at best in our salaries compared to other cities, and figure out what we do next. I will support the adoption of this budget, and I will look forward to, when do we do the mid-year review? When is that approximately? Or the adjustments?
We do, we have a couple of reports.
Well, obviously, mid-year, but fiscal. When do we, when do we come back to do adjustments to the budget?
So, we will come back to the council typically in the fall, November, early December with, we close out the, we present two things to the council, we close out fiscal year 2223, we present our annual audited financial statements, and then we do our first quarter update, and then very shortly after that, usually in February, we do a mid-year report.
And that's when we also look at what our sales tax has been for that period?
Correct.
And projections. Well, hopefully, things hold up well. I do want to mention that when we have that review or prior to that, I know staff is going to work on a report about providing additional staff in the city manager's office to help council members and perhaps act like ombudsmen. I would like to see at a certain point, a serious consideration of an ombudsman-type position, someone who's going to be able to answer questions for the community, be like a 411 switchboard, direct folks to the right department, whether they answer directly to the council member, I would like to see them answer to council members, and I think some of my colleagues would as well. I think it would alleviate a tremendous amount of, free up our time to be able to do more and serve our constituents and our residents better. And I appreciate that councilmember Divine reminded staff to look into that and bring back a report during the meeting when I was not here. Thank you. So, that's all.
Thank you, thank you. So, I'll just say again, thanks to staff for, you know, it's a long process that we go through every year, and we only see the end of the process, because I know before even that first study session, there've been months of work in the departments to prepare the numbers that are going to be presented up to us. So, it's a very long process, I think you're probably spending half the year. Am I, am I right? You're probably spending half the year working on the budget?
It's a fair assessment, sometimes it feels longer. Sometimes it feels longer, yeah.
We're going to start the next fiscal year's budget tomorrow.
In any case, it is a lot of work, and I appreciate it, and I think the process every year gets better, there's more clarity, but I think we could still continue to improve. I know this year, we asked for some disaggregated data on our police and fire, and how they compare in terms of budget, in terms of staffing, in terms of incidents, and other things, and there wasn't time for staff to really give us a very rigorous analysis that compares apples to apples. So, I would like to see us do more of that in future years, get that process started early. We talk about this new data city alliance that we're going to be, or city data, data city data alliance that we are a part of, you know, let's think about, you know, applying data more to some of this decision-making, and to looking at the results of some of these investments that we're making, and see if they are doing for our community what we, what we expected them to do. So, last thing I'll say is, you know, you look at this year, and it looks very healthy, we've got a surplus, well, we're anticipating, I guess, at the end of the year, a reserve of $114, $115 million, 36.4% of our general fund budget. That is very healthy. I don't think there are many cities that are sitting on that kind of surplus. However, we all know that we have large unfunded pension liabilities, we know that we are hitting an inflection point in the next couple of years with our pension. pension obligations. We will no longer have ARPA funds to help us balance our budget. So we do have some difficult decisions. As nice as it looks now, we have some difficult decisions coming up. I think we will have to look at some belt tightening. We will have to look at some additional revenues. None of those additional revenues and none of that belt tightening will go without some consternation among either some members of our staff or members of the public or both. So we know, but we, I think it's council's job to face reality, to be honest brokers, and make the decisions that are going to keep us whole over the long term. So that's really the, I think, the backdrop here, but I'm happy with where we are. Again, this is a living document, right? We do come each quarter, and we can make adjustments. And if we find there are upsides in our tax revenues or we are, we've identified new sources of funding, we can then go and make changes along the way. So thank you for that. And again, we have no callers?
No callers.
Yeah, so I'll close the public hearing at 8:12 PM, and we can just move. Okay.
Second.
So we have a, we have a motion from Councilmember Najarian, and this is for items?
Nine A, two through eight.
Nine A?
Two through eight.
Two through four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay. And a second from Councilmember Devine, is that right? Okay. So let's have a roll call.
Councilmembers, Azadarian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes. Thank you. Good job. Thank you. And our next hearing.
Next, our next hearing is city attorney regarding first public hearing regarding the composition of council districts related to the city's proposed transition to district-based council member elections. One resolution revising the timeline for conducting public hearings, formulating proposed district maps, and presenting proposed ballot language for council consideration for placement of adoption of council districts on the ballot for March 2024 general municipal election. And I'd like to remind the public that we have translators. We have someone who will be translating into Armenian and also another translator in Spanish.
Mr. Mayor. So if you open the public hearing. So on May 2nd, the council adopted a resolution to initiate the process to transition to council districts that will involve potential charter amendments to expand the size of the council and also look at a directly elected mayor. So under the process that's required by law, the city council is required to have at least four public hearings and to provide context for the decision as well as obtain public input and public feedback on the proposed districts. This is the first such public hearing tonight, and we'll have another hearing, the second hearing will be on June, sorry, July 11th. So I'm going to turn it over to Doug Johnson. Doug is the president of National Demographics Corporation. He is the city's retained demographer, who will be providing the analysis necessary to establish the districts in accordance with the direction that you ultimately provide to him and to staff. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to, I think it's Dr. Johnson.
Yeah, and before you begin, Dr. Johnson, let me formally open the hearing. Please.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be back at this podium. Been here every few years on different topics, so good to be here. Again, as was mentioned, there are translators, so if anyone needs Armenian or Spanish, just raise your hand, and the translator will get you a headset. So very briefly, National Demographics has been doing this work since 1979, actually working with local governments throughout California. We've districted or redistricted over 450 jurisdictions to date, ranging from airport districts and hospital districts up to counties and states. So it's a pleasure to be here, and I'm actually a Glendale native. To Mr. Najarian's point about, he's been around a long time. I remember voting for him for community college board back in the day. So it's a pleasure to be here. And NDC and I did the work for the school district and for the college district. I look familiar to some people. It's because we're doing Burbank right now as well, and we're also working, we just finished with Santa Clarita, and we're working with Irvine. So we do a lot of this. It's really all we do is working with jurisdictions through this process, so it's a pleasure to be working here. And we're working as well, they're not joining me today, but they'll present the next meeting with Tripepe Smith, which is a firm we've worked with dozens of times, working on outreach and truly, as was mentioned, and as I'll detail a little bit more, really engaging the city in this process. The direction from the council and from staff that we're helping to implement is to really get out there in the community, get the word out, and involve people in this process. So with that intro, I'll jump into the slides here. This is an extensive process. It starts with state requirements for five hearings, and tonight is the first of those. And then the city is taking the initiative to go even farther with, as was mentioned earlier tonight, part of the council in your neighborhood, sorry, I stumbled on the frame, the council in your neighborhood effort will involve information on this process, and there will be a number of focused on this topic, community workshops. Those will start, I believe the outreach starts tonight with this hearing, and then the first round will go through July 27th. The reason for the first part is that there are two stages of this required by statute. The first is this information spreading, trying to engage the community and get input on what should be the building blocks of the districts. There are no maps yet of districts yet. In this first stage, we're really trying to get the public involved, and actually have the public draw draft maps first. In the middle of that outreach process will come the second presentation to council, which will be very similar to tonight's. It's the second statutorily required intro hearing, but we'll add in what we've heard from the community so far. So that goes through the end of July, and residents have, will be learning at these forums how to draw their own maps. Like I said, we want them to draw the maps of their neighborhoods and of proposed districts. August 5th is the deadline for people to get their initial draft maps in. Those will be posted by August 8th. And then August 15th will be when we get into really phase two, which is the maps of this process. And at that council hearing, we'll present all the maps that have been received so far from residents and that NDC draws based on the comments of the residents. Then we go into a second round of community forums and hearing from the community about what they think of the different maps. That will go on from August 17th through September 7th. Then the final deadline for residents to submit maps is September 28th, so we can get those posted October 3rd. And note that there's always a week. The maps are always posted for a week, so people have time to look at them and consider them prior to the council hearing on October 10th. We're likely, the council will get close to and hopefully choose a map because we do have first and second reading of this process, and the second reading would be rescheduled for October 24th. One thing that Glendale is doing differently than most jurisdictions is developing these maps and then putting it to the voters. And so if people are following other jurisdictions, they may have seen just the council adopts it and it takes effect. In this case, the council's direction has been to get a plan together, put it to voters, and give the voters the final say. So in March, that'll be when the voters weigh in to approve or disapprove of this. That is worth noting, with the city elections in March, the city, this upcoming March elections will not be changed. This is for the future elections, starting in 2026. So that's the timeline. It's an extensive project, really to get the community involved in this, and that really is the theme and the focus of all this. In addition to the statutory requirements for process, there's also some strict state rules on drawing the maps. So you see three sets of rules and goals here. The first, and we'll be talking about these at every forum, so pretty much everyone who follows this process will be able to recite these by the end of the process. But the first requirements are federal, equal population. And I do want to emphasize that it is people. And people is counted in the census with some slight adjustments by the state for prison populations, but it's really equal people. So it's not equal numbers of registered voters or equal numbers of citizens, it's people counted in the census, and each district will represent the same number of people. And that's federal law. Similarly, we have the Federal Voting Rights Act, and I'll come back to that in a moment, but there are certain defined protected classes under federal law, and we have to be sure that the map doesn't dilute their voting strength in any way. And of course, we'll be working hard to assure that's true. And at the same time, no racial gerrymandering. So you have to be aware of the different protected classes, not dilute them in any way, but race cannot be what the court calls a predominant factor in why you choose a map. Can't be like, I like that map better because this group is 27% and that group, and in this map is 26. It can't be the predominant factor and it can just be one factor in your decision. So that's the federal laws. For those that followed the school or the community college district process or followed schools elsewhere, the next set of rules didn't apply. So the state laws in the middle column only apply, currently at least, to cities and counties. So if people have been involved in those school processes or special districts, these rules weren't in place for those jurisdictions. So the state has said that cities and counties must, in priority order, draw contiguous districts, so no pieces of districts spread across the city. That's fairly straightforward. And then we must, as much as possible, use undivided neighborhoods and communities of interest. And I'll come back to this a little bit more, but this is really the goal of this first phase before we have draft maps, is to define neighborhoods and communities of interest according to the residents. The third prioritized criteria is following easily identifiable boundaries, rivers, freeways, mountain ranges, whatever makes it easy for the voters to understand, and they be compact. So no bypassing one group of people to get to another group of people. The state also has a prohibition, so those are things we have to do. We also are prohibited from drawing lines that favor or discriminate against a political party. So those are the state requirements. Those just kicked in in 2020, so they are fairly new. So those are the statutory requirements, both federal and state. Then we have some, a couple of court-approved principles or goals. These are not requirements. These are simply things that courts have said are acceptable considerations once you've met all the statutory requirements. So the first one is you can consider, again, not required, but you're allowed to consider respecting the voters' choices, which is looking at minimizing avoidable pairings of current council members. This always raises questions, and again, it's not a requirement, but the idea here is that the voters elected the current council, and reelection decisions should be up to the voters. If we end up with a map, and we may very well end up with a map that pairs council members here, then the voters, even if they think both council members have earned reelection, they can't reelect both. So to the degree we can, within the other statutory requirements, we're allowed to look at that and try to minimize pairings, if that's one thing you want to look at. And then future population growth. You are allowed, within that equal population requirement, a couple of percent over or under. And so if you know an area is going to grow faster than others, you can underpopulate it by a couple of percent relative to the other districts. It's nothing that can completely offset, you know, large population growth in one part of the city, but it is something we can do to try to keep them balanced longer term. So these are the criteria. These are the rules and goals, and we'll come back to these at every community forum and at every hearing as we get to drawing and evaluating maps. Quick demographics, I'm not going to go through all these numbers. There's a lot of data in this process. The main goal of this is to highlight two things. Number one is, the top left is the total population count according to the adjusted census data from the state. These are the numbers that we really have to use, 196,980. Divide that by six, and you get about 32,830 people per district. So that's our target number with a very small margin either way on that. The other data I'm just showing here to show you every map that we process. Oh. Sorry.
Is there a GTV6 issue?
I was watching it in the back, it stopped. The sound went off.
Oh.
So just want to make sure.
Okay, let's just hold on for a second.
No problem.
We get this taken care of.
Just want to make sure I put you.
Is it coming through all right?
Yeah.
They're saying it's fine. So it could be, it could be just in the back there. Okay, we can continue then. Thank you.
No problem. And if anyone's missed anything, these slides are actually the same slides we'll use at the next hearing as well. As I mentioned, we repeat it, so. The other data that's here is shown because for every map and every district in every map, we'll be generating all of this data. So there's data on language spoken at home, renters, multifamily residents. So the use of this data can be used if people are particularly interested in seeing, is there a district or two or three that are majority renter? Is there a district or two or three that are majority multifamily residents? You know, what percentage of given districts don't speak English at home? All this data will be presented so people can look at those maps, compare all these statistics, and see where each map is at. I mentioned the Voting Rights Act and the Federal Voting Rights Act, and they need to comply with that. So there are four protected classes under the law, Latinos, Asian-Americans, Black or African-American, and Native American. So quickly go through and look at some numbers and maps of where those protected classes are. In terms of Latino, the CVAP is Citizen Voting Age Population. So this is data on, as close we can get, to eligible voters. And you can see there's a little bit of concentration in the Southwest where the greens, yellows, and reds are the majority Latinos in those city blocks, or at least estimates of majorities. See a little bit of concentration there, where there's an individual block, like you see over in the canyon over in the east, that's not going to be a lot of people, so it's not going to drive the demographics of a district. We're looking more for a neighborhood where there's a concentration of a given group. So you get a little bit along the I-5 corridor and the LA city border down there in the Southwest, but no huge area that jumps out like in many of our jurisdictions where you have a majority of Latino area and then very little elsewhere. The Latinos in the city are much more dispersed throughout the city than they often are in some jurisdictions. Similarly, Asian-Americans get a little bit of concentration just on the other side of the freeway, of the two freeway in the east, but, and actually drilled into that, it's kind of the Rancho San Rafael homeowner association area. But again, not huge numbers. We're not seeing it, numbers that would really drive a, say, an Asian-American majority district or anything like that. But it's something to be aware of and want to avoid dividing up that area. The third one that we mapped out is African-American population. Again, we're not getting any real concentrations where African-Americans are more than 25%. Obviously, there are lots of African-Americans in the city. They're just dispersed throughout the city. They're not concentrated in just one neighborhood. Obviously, the question comes up here and often in this process is the Armenian population. Under the Federal Voting Rights Act, Armenians are not a protected class, but they clearly are a community of interest. When we talk about communities of interest, and I'll come back to that in a moment, the definition of it, Armenians definitely meet the status of that. So we did map the Armenian population as well. This is the Armenian percentage of registered voters. As I'm sure you're all aware, the city has weighed in on this, the census does not do a good job of counting Armenians. And so the best data we've found is looking at PDI, many of you are familiar with PDI, they're a political voter list firm. They have an Armenian algorithm that they use to calculate registered voters. It's far from perfect, but it does give us kind of geographic areas where the Armenians are concentrated. You can see this here. Again, the blues are 25 to 50%, greens are 50 to 65, yellows are 65 to 75, and reds are 75% or over. And you can see concentrations in lots of parts of the city. This is a very different map than it would have been 20 years ago, which is good to see. But you can see concentrations in the south, obviously in the northwest, and then up along the two corridor and spreading more and more to the north. So this data is all available, and people who want to look at it can look at it in the drawing of their maps as they're developing it. Other socioeconomic factors that can be used, if people think they are good definitions of communities of interest, these can be used. You can see children at home in the top left. That is an indication really of where there are younger families that have children under 18 at home. Spanish spoken at home. In the top right, you get kind of our standard kind of income chart of the percentage of households that are over 75%, I'm sorry, $75,000 annual income or higher. Bottom left is renters, and the bottom right is... Bottom left is renters, and the bottom right is multifamily housing, apartments or condos. Obviously, on this slide, these are small maps that are a little hard to see the details of. There is, on the website, they'll talk about in a moment, an interactive map where you can zoom in and out, and you can turn on each of these factors, and you can see them for your own specific neighborhood or any specific area and zoom in and out on the map. But these are just examples that we do encourage people to think about and to get people thinking about, what is your community if you define it socioeconomically? Obviously, neighborhoods and geographic areas are what we tend to think of first when we think of communities. So we pulled some data, and what we use these forums is to get the discussion going. So we have city data, you know, the boundaries of each homeowner association. So we throw this out and say, do you consider this a map of your neighborhood or your community of interest? People might say yes, people might say no, and some parts of the city may more identify with the HOA than in other parts of the city, and that's all good information we want to Similarly, the city, as you may be familiar, but residents may not, the city has unofficial neighborhoods. And again, I want to stress, these are quick reference, kind of useful reference points, but these are not official boundaries in any way, shape, or form. And part of this process is to throw this map up and ask people, you know, in the, you know, Verdugo Viejo neighborhood, is this what you consider your neighborhood or not? So we're using this as a conversation starter, not as a statutory definition of neighborhoods. And looking, asking people, what do you think? Does this work? Does this not work? Where would you draw your neighborhood? And they may think of their neighborhood as being bigger or smaller than the areas indicated here. So these are all ideas to get the conversation going about what is a neighborhood or community of interest. Because ultimately it comes down to the definition, and it can be whatever residents think. So people may define their neighborhood around a school, they might define it around a street, around a park. Whatever residents think of as their city, we want to hear in this early stage of the process, and then use those as the building blocks as we draft maps. Communities of interest are a weird term. Everyone understands neighborhood, right? But what's a community of interest? And this is really, as defined by law, is a socioeconomic or policy or other shared story, to put it simply. What ties your community together? And then there's a second piece, and this is always an interesting intellectual challenge for folks. If you define an area that you think of in terms of city issues, do you want it to be united in one seat or divided? Most of the time, we default to unite us so we can elect our council member and get a voice on the council. But sometimes you may think of it as you actually want to be divided. Because one thing we emphasize in the forums is, this is not the county. The council members are not going to be the boss of their district and run their district. It's still going to take a majority of the council to do anything. There's none of the deference that you get at county levels to districts. And so sometimes it may be better to say, we have a big issue, we actually want two council members who come to our meetings and who represent our residents. You still got to get to a majority. If we end up with seven, you still got to get to four votes. So two council members who answer to you is two votes. If you have the mayor, three votes, and you're almost there. So that's a way of thinking about it when people think about, hey, this is my issue. Say, traffic on Glen Oaks is my issue. Do you want to keep that all together in one district or actually have multiple council members who have residents who are impacted by traffic on Glen Oaks? It's one way to think about it. And that's what we're looking for in these forums, is for people to tell us, what is your community of interest, and would you rather be in one district or split up? So then to kind of wrap up here in terms of the mapping tools, we'll go into these in detail at the forums and do demos of how to use them. I'll be brief, in light of you have lots of things on your agenda. So one of the goals is to get the residents to draw maps. So if the residents go to mapglenale.org, the site is already live, thanks to your staff who've worked hard with Truppi Smith to build that up and get all the dates and everything in there. But we do have these mapping tools up there, and I do want to emphasize, these are just to empower people. There's no requirement to use these. Sometimes people are intimidated. Use pen and paper if you want, we love it. But for those who want to jump in, we have a little bit more. First of all, is this interactive review map. It's really, it's Google Maps with checkboxes to overlay is really all it is. You can't draw anything here, but this is where all the draft maps will go. And so people can see all the maps, they can look at all those socioeconomic factors and community of interest factors I was just talking about. They can search by address and zoom in, whatever they want to do. So this is kind of where all the information will be presented, and it's linked on multiple pages of mapglenale.org. We always want to say, when we offer computer tools, people may not want to use them, so we have paper. So there is public participation kits, they're available here at the city, people can download them from the website, people can print them out and hand them out to their friends. These are little geographic units, and we make them small to give you flexibility, and they stay right on there, you know, the target population and where to turn them in. So people just draw their district or a set of six districts that they want, and then they add up the numbers and send it in. So you don't have to use a computer, you have to be pretty good at careful addition to get your numbers right, but you can't, residents can submit maps that are population balanced using just this map. And it's just one page, so pretty easy to use. For those who want to dive in a little deeper, there's DRA, it's called Dave's Redistricting App. This is an app that's been out there for 25 years, I think now, mostly focused on looking at state redistricting projects, but a couple of years ago, they added on a local module. So now we can use it for local redistricting projects. And this lets everyone really drill down and look at demographics and look at maps block by block that you really can't do on a piece of paper. So this is a full-blown tool, you can really get detailed, you can look in the city, whatever parts of the city, overlay different demographics. And you can't really see it here, but on the slides and on the website, in the bottom left are the school district and the community college district lines as overlays. If residents want to try to follow those, obviously, those both have, like, number one, they both have five seats, not six or seven, and then they also have lacrosse center in them. So we can't copy those lines, but if residents want to try to follow them in certain neighborhoods, those are available as overlays as well. So this is a full-blown tool, and we encourage residents to use it. Do want to emphasize, you can work on it, show it to your neighbors, work some more, come back to it. So you do have to log in, so they're your maps, and at the end of the process, residents have to remember to send in their map, all the information's on mapglenale.org of where to send it and all that. But until someone finishes their map and sends it to us, we don't know what's out there. So that's the final thing I do want to emphasize, and we'll go over in the forums really how to use it and show how to use it. It really is a simple tool. There's the, at the top left, you can see a little paintbrush and the eraser. That's really how you draw it. You paint your district, and if you make a mistake, you just use the eraser and redo So as I mentioned, at the next hearing, we're going to have a full-blown report on what outreach and engagement's going on, but here's a summary of everything that's happening. There is the website, there will be the in-person workshops, the dates are listed on the website. We'll also have virtual workshops, and the workshops will have translation at them as well, pop-up events, obviously, social media. Truppi Smith and the city staff are coordinating to make a video to introduce people to this issue and kind of tell them why this issue matters and how they can participate. And then flyers, community group outreach to lots and lots of community groups across the city to try to get them engaged. And we are just about six weeks behind Burbank in the process, so groups that are involved in both cities are already familiar with this process and aware from what Burbank's been doing, and hopefully will take that experience and bring it over here, to get involved over here as well. So that wraps up my presentation. The goal of this hearing, the formal goal of this hearing, is to get initial input on communities of interest and neighborhoods and kind of answer those questions I was asking about and to ask anything about. How do people want to see the maps drawn? Wrap it up.
Well, thank you very much. We've got a lot of work ahead of us. Excuse me, thank you very much. I was saying we've got a lot of work ahead of us.
Can I ask a few questions? I didn't want to interrupt during the presentation, if that's all right.
Okay. So you want to ask some questions? Okay, well, let's do a round of questions. We've got a couple cards, maybe some others coming in, so maybe that'll give time for others to decide they want to share their thoughts.
Thank you very much for that presentation, Mr. Johnson. Good to see you again. So you mentioned a lot about the neighborhood models or the neighborhoods in Glendale. Obviously, folks in Glendale love their neighborhoods. Has that model been used effectively in other jurisdictions, any cities that you can think of where the neighborhoods were a foundation for creating the districts?
They're always, to some degree, a foundation, that both before the law passed and now under fair maps, they really are the building block we have to use. Glendale's unusual in kind of, not formalizing, because it's an unofficial map, but trying to sketch out a starting point of neighborhoods. And obviously, if people go back or go to the online site and compare the two maps, the HOAs don't quite match. So people might think the HOA is a better definition than an official map or vice versa. But we always try to use neighborhoods, we just often don't have as complete a starting point for it. But for example, just because it's top of mind, we've done this a couple hundred times, but Burbank is obviously fresh since we're in the middle of that. There are a couple of key neighborhoods, Magnolia Park and other places that are key neighborhoods. Down in Irvine is where we're also doing this process right now, it's much more like Glendale. Virtually, the whole city is in what they call planning areas. And the whole process and the challenge facing all the residents is to try to draw districts, minimizing as few planning areas as they can. So it is a common, it's actually a required goal of the state law, and it's a common model. We just are kind of more info than normal.
I think using neighborhoods is valuable, but I don't want to over-rely on it because if we're going to deal with, let's say, a neighborhood association that may not represent everyone in the neighborhood, I know that, you know, our homeowners associations work hard, they do good work, but some of them haven't really had a great turnover in membership or leadership for some time. I'm not going to mention any names, but I would like us to cast a wide net for a process like this as wide a net as possible. So along with the interactive pages that you mentioned, will there be a page for comments or just suggestions? You know, I like the idea of there being an interactive map, I like the idea of allowing residents to go in there and kind of tinker and look at what suggestions could work. But what if someone just doesn't have the time? Maybe someone's not a demographics geek like us, right, and wants to just simply put up a comment saying, I agree with this, I disagree with this, don't forget to look into this? How is someone going to make that comment known and voice heard, and hopefully not on nextdoorneighbor.com on a legitimate, controlled?
Sure. No, exactly right. So on mapglenale.org is the email address, so anyone can just send just a standard email like they can on any other issue. I do want to emphasize that these tools are to help, you don't have to use the tools. Anyone can send in an email with their words. There's also a, submit your community of interest to survey form. So people don't have to draw a map, they don't have to outline things on that, they can simply type in, hey, my neighborhood is this, I define it as this area, and it's bordered by these streets, and just pure text. So on the website, there is all those methods, and hopefully they'll come to the forums as well. And of course, all the forum input will be collected and reported back to councils as well.
For the virtual workshops, I'm assuming you mean Zoom-type workshops?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you. I understand that folks have a lot to say, but it can be a little distracting from the audience gallery, hearing some of the conversations back and forth. I do appreciate you all working and cooperating with us to get through this meeting. Thank you. And the only thing, I don't know if now's the time we want to comment on it, I'll probably save my comments until after we hear from the public. Oh, and one last thing, Burbank has put up lawn signs and they have some other promotional materials. Is that something that you're considering doing, is Truppi considering doing, to have some old-fashioned, I guess, analog ways of advertising besides online advertising about this process?
I don't think the budget here involves like lawn signs, and to my sense, it's very unusual to use that. This is much more, in our experience, it's much more an effort that spreads through word of mouth. You know, people, district elections, it's kind of abstract. And so people really only show up when someone that they listen to tells them this is an important issue. So that's where the, reaching out to every community group we can possibly identify and saying, please share this information with all your members and your neighbors is really the focus. So I don't think that's in this budget. If the council wishes, of course, the budget is.
I don't think it costs much, and it may be worthwhile, at least at public places. You know, there's summer camp going on right now, parents are dropping off their kids at camp, you know, they're picking them up, just having a sign outside of there or even a poster, letting people know that it's coming up. I think it's worthwhile. I would suggest that we do something like that, multilingual as well, with QR codes that can link to, what is it, mapglenale.org. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Satria.
Thank you for the presentation. I do echo Mr., or Councilmember Saki's comments about the flyers and whatnot. I think putting them up in our small businesses and like the window fronts of the markets and stuff would be a wonderful place. How do you plan on doing the outreach for these meetings? Are there like partnerships created with local organizations? Do you guys have a social media plan? Because I think that a lot of, especially when we're thinking about the younger generation, you know, they use different mediums to obtain information, and so your typical, I'm going to just speak for the Armenian community, your typical Armenian newspaper that we used to read 10 years ago, you're following an Instagram account now to get the news. So I just, I don't know who's helping compile that for you, for Glendale, but I want to make sure that our Armenian and Filipino and Hispanic and all the diverse communities are connected to know that they can do this. I think immigrant communities are the ones that tend to be left out of the process because they don't understand that buzz, and this is a complicated process for them. And so, you know, I would love to hear, it doesn't have to be today, but I would love to hear at some point what your plans are with that respect. So, and then I did take a look at, I don't know, I went online on my phone really quick. I'm not sure if there's a different desktop version versus the mobile version, but the mobile version doesn't have the map, it's not showing up for me. And so if that's not the case, to make sure that we have a mobile version, because most people don't use desktops, they use telephones, and adding to the multilingual, I want to make sure that our online platforms are also multilingual, and they're not, you know, I think one of the things I've commented in the past was, you can't say, click here for Armenian and have that be in English, right? Okay. And so I think that's all I have, but thank you so much.
Questions now, or do we?
No, just maybe some, yeah, questions now, and then I'll go to the speakers.
I just want, I have a concern about, the agenda report tells us that this is, we're doing six council members and elected mayor. What about those that don't want an elected mayor, that are against an elected mayor? What is their process? What can they do? And can we do a study of both?
So, yes.
Is that your bailiwick? I don't know.
Yes, definitely. So the council's direction, if I understand correctly, was to go forward with six plus one at this point. If they're, that's not locked in, you can change your mind if you wish. There's two pieces of this. One is that the Dave's Redistricting App, the DRA tool, you can actually just change the setting. It's set up for six, but if someone wants to draw seven, they just go into the settings for the map and change it to seven. So that is flexible. Obviously, they can, they'd have to do a little bit of math to use the paper tool if they want to draw a seven-seat map.
Is that something you can explain at the outreach, at the different meetings?
We can, yes.
So people know that?
Yes, we can do it. So there is that kind of practical side of it, it's pretty straightforward to make those tools available. The challenge we run into with that, just having done this hundreds of times now, is that we have to be very careful in the forums to differentiate, because if we have people submitting six-seat maps and seven-seat maps, the public discussion tends to be dominated by six versus seven. And do we want a citywide mayor or not? And what we lose is any comment on the maps, because everyone's focusing on the big question. So that's where, we can do it, and we've done it, where we would set up a, this is a discussion of six, we'll finish that and move to a discussion of seven, to get people to focus on the maps. So we can handle that. Of course, people can come and share their thoughts, even if you don't give direction for us to formally do anything for seven. They're always welcome to do it. We do encourage them to come more to council with that, because this is a council direction question. But yes, we have done projects, often asked the question about pluses and minuses of six versus seven, and I do want to emphasize, I didn't talk about this at the beginning, but NDC's role in this is completely neutral. You know, we're not pushing any policy, we're not pushing any map. We actually, we will draw some maps out of the mix, but our hope is actually that the residents will get involved and draw a good enough map to residents will get involved and draw a good enough map to choose pick one of their maps, because we will train them. And we do talks of six versus seven, citywide mayors, not citywide mayors, all the time. If that's somewhere the council directs us to go, we can go there.
Well, I think that would be, I think the residents should be informed about everything, all the different choices, not just one. And so I think the more you can let people know that they can, if you want, you know, do you want an elected mayor, or do you not want an elected mayor? Do you want seven council members, or do you want six with a mayor? But I think that should be clear to everyone, so that they have a voice in this decision.
We can...
And, yeah. So that was what I was going to have on my notes, I'm sorry. Page for suggestions, which Councilmember Kusakian brought up, that perhaps that's a good place where people can, you know, kind of express their opinions, whether they want an elected mayor or not.
Sure. And we can certainly, I mean, if it's council's privilege, approval, we can certainly say council's direction was six plus one. If you would prefer a different system, you know, here's the comments page of the website, share that thought, and they can share it at the forums.
Well, I just feel it's a decision that our city, our residents should make, not this five. I think it's the 200,000 that live in this city. Do you want an elected mayor, or do you not? If they do, that's what we should do. If they don't, then we should look at seven council members and rotate the mayorship like we've always done. I mean, it's simply a kind of a, you know, perfunctory kind of rotation. So anyway, that's just, I just want to make sure that you do that.
And we will be mentioning that at the meetings, that if the council sticks with six plus mayor, the mayor remains the same powers that the mayor has now, with tiny little tweaks, but it's not a Los Angeles-style strong mayor. We're not going anywhere. There'll still be the city manager and all that stays the same. We can bring that up. And just looking ahead, at the end of this first stage, will kind of be the time where we'll ask council to, if you're going to change paths, that would be the time to do it.
When did you, when...
At the end of the, at the end of this first round of forums, when we come back in July.
Oh, okay, okay. And as I understand it, you're actually, we're actually going to have 15 outreach meetings for the public, and two in each kind of district, and that's terrific. The more, the better. Thank you.
Happy to do it.
Thank you. Questions?
So, hi, I'm glad you remembered me from my college days. Listen, I think we're doing this the wrong way, and let me tell you why. We're not here to just pick districts because we want districts. We're doing this really in advance of challenges to our at-large system due to the fact that it disenfranchises certain members of the protected groups, the Latino, the Asian-American, the Black African-American groups. So why are we, you know, talking about homeowner associations as possible, dividing lines or communities, when what's really important is what our mandate is, is to create districts that are going to give representation to the very fine population down to the precinct level of Latinos versus others, versus the general white community? So this isn't just put up a map, and this is a nice area, and that's a nice area. This is a very serious, complex issue that we're doing, and I think just throwing it out to the public that don't have the detailed information about what would be an appropriate district is just a waste of time. I'm against districts. But if we're going to go to districts, this is a very, you know, it's a very precise modeling we have to do that may violate some of these premises, these tenants of no racial gerrymandering, no extended regions. So how do you, I mean, why are we doing this? We could take South Glendale and split it into two districts, let's just say. That's not going to solve a problem if we're challenged. If someone says, "Hey, I'm a Latino," I still have no voice on council, because in my Latino neighborhood, I've got just as many Armenians in there. So I'm not sure we're going the right way. I think we're off track, with all due respect. Tell me I'm wrong. But we're just not doing districts because we think it's a good thing to do. We're doing districts in advance of what some other cities are experiencing with challenges. I just spoke to Santa Clarita today. Marsha McLean explained her whole rationale on that. She's not a fan of districts either, but that's really what we're trying to do, is give a voice, regardless of lawsuits, give a voice to those underrepresented communities. Now, we see no Latinos up here currently, although we've had many in the past. I won't go through that list. So it's not just draw, you know, communities. It's got to be communities that are going to give a voice to a particular ethnic group, which I've been told, and I've understand, cannot be done in Glendale, because they're so intertwined in South Glendale, let's say. Armenians, Latinos, they're like this, and you can't break them apart. Tell me I'm wrong. Council, colleagues, this is what we're dealing with. It's not just draw districts because it looks nice on the map. It's a very specific demographic analysis we have to do. We're going to ask people to go to Dave's districting thing or whatever. That's not going to help us. That's a farce, I think.
But our...
Our...
That's just the way I think.
I want to go to the speakers, but I just want to say, the city attorney and your firm, or somebody else, are going to analyze the districts that finally emerge to make sure that we are meeting the requirements of the California Voting Rights Act, right?
And the Federal Voting Rights Act. That's correct, sir.
And the Federal Voting Rights Act.
Yes.
So at the end of the day, we're going through this process, but we are going to ensure that the maps we come up with in the end are meeting the requirements that we're facing.
So our city attorney and Mr. Johnson are going to draw the maps?
No.
No.
But maybe you can explain how it works, that we end up with maps that are compliant.
Let me defer to Mr. Johnson, and I'll add whatever I think is appropriate.
So first of all, setting the stage, we're on this question as well. We're neutral. You know, we worked with Santa Clarita when they fought the challenge, and then we worked with Santa Clarita when they drew the lines. We were, whatever the jurisdiction needs, we're happy to help out. So I don't have a, I don't prefer districts or not districts. Where there are clear voting rights require, voting rights, what we call Section 2 is the law, requirements that, here's a geographic area where you can empower Latinos, and they're geographically compact, and some other factors. This district has to be drawn, we'll tell you. And yes, in jurisdictions that have that very dense Latino community concentrated in one area, that can be required, as the council members mentioning. In Glendale, however, we don't have those large pockets. So that's why you give that map, is we have the, kind of the southwest I-5 corridor, where there's more Latinos than there are in other parts. But you're exactly right. They're not going to be anywhere near 50% of the district's voters. So we want to avoid dividing that area. It would dilute them more than you have to. But yeah, we're just going to take the Latino population in one or two districts up a few percent from where they are today citywide. Similarly, with Asian-Americans, we have that area over in the east, so we don't want to divide up a way, divide up, but there's still only going to be 5%, 10% of the district. They're not going to be a majority. So we don't, in Glendale, don't have the kind of federally dictated map. So that's why we're asking the question. Now, if we and your legal team look at a map and say, hey, like split right, they split the Latino community into five pieces, so instead of being 17%, they're only 12, we'll flag that. You know, there will be maps, the most common flag you'll see is not population balanced, where people throw together a map, and it'll be stamped on it in big letters. But we'll also see maps that, if we run into them and say, "This map has questions about Voting Rights Act compliance," or "This map has questions about Fair Maps Act requirements." So we'll flag this for you. But in Glendale, we're not one of those jurisdictions that are so dictated. Santa Clarita had us, they actually went to court and had a settlement agreement that said, "You will draw this one district, because that's the most Latino seat you can have." And then the council got to work around it. But in Glendale, we have much more flexibility. But yes, we will be watching that to make sure that whatever maps you get comply. But there's a ton of flexibility beyond that.
Okay.
Mayor? Just one really quick thing. I understand Councilmember Najarian's concerns. Look, this isn't going to be a absolutely perfect process. We're going to try and make it as perfect as possible. There have been instances where after the California Voting Rights Act was implemented and jurisdictions had to look into it, minority candidates actually lost their seats. So it's not a cure-all, and it's not a perfect way of going about this, but if we were to implement it as it was now, it would be far more limiting than what we're trying to do, which is expand representation across the city. So this presentation, which was a very good presentation, I think there's a lot of information, a lot of folks, I saw some folks taking photos of the screen as your maps were up. I know it's on the packet agenda for this meeting. Will it also be on the website? And can we put it on the website?
Yes, definitely. So on the calendar page of the website, the presentations for each meeting will be posted along there.
Perfect. That is all. Thank you.
Okay. Let us go to the public speakers, starting with Kristin Hernandez. Is Kristin Hernandez here? Perhaps not. Okay. Vartan Garpetian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Najarian, Councilmember Najarian, for your comments. I agree with everything you said about the school district and the parents' rights. I'm with them all the way as well. I think we are, the process is kind of, it's not clear, because it looks like that we already passed the districting, and we are drawing the boundary maps. I think we need to find out first if the people want to do it or not. Put it out to vote, then find out how you're going to draw the maps. Do you want to know what districting does? It creates corruption, kingdom, and it disenfranchises people. Imagine if you are a concerned parent who is a Republican and is conservative, and your council member is a very left liberal Democrat. Do you think you're going to have any representation? I don't think so. Since 2016, the politics of Washington was brought to this city, and that tore this community apart and made all of our elected seats a partisan seat, which was never like that before. Before 2016, no seat was partisan seat, but it tore this community apart. Just look what happened with the city of LA. We don't want to be any other city. We don't want to be Pasadena, we don't want to be Burbank, we don't want to be LA. Just what happened with the city of LA? The secret recording, we all heard that, and how they were trying to draw the boundary lines to disenfranchise other communities. You want to know what this situation is going to look like? Look at Glendale Unified School District. You have a map already, and the college, you have a map already. And they went through two elections on their districting. What changed? Do you have a Latino on those boards? No, because sometimes people don't have an interest in some positions, sometimes do, right? So there is, we went through this in 2015. We put it out for a vote, we did all the research. You cannot carve out an area in Glendale that has more Latinos than Armenians, more Koreans than whites, more African-Americans than Latinos. You cannot carve that out, because Glendale is a great city. Every ethnic group lives all over the town, every part of the town, north, south, east, west. You cannot have that, because you have to have the same number of people in every district. So you want to know what is it going to do? That's what it is. It's out there. And also, why are we doing this? Is it because of this letter that was posted by Glendale Union, Glendale...
Tenants.
Tenants Union.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
David Gaborian.
Good evening, councilmembers, Mayor Brodmann, city staff. Thank you for this opportunity to comment on Glendale's districting. And if it's okay with the city council, I'd like to address both the city council and the public on my opinions regarding districting. Drawing the maps is the fun part. It really is a lot of fun. And I've always said, you don't know politics until you've gone through a districting or redistricting process. But I believe it's backwards, and I agree with some of the comments that were made, that the public hasn't voted on whether they want districting, and I think we should do that before we start drawing out maps. Because there's a number of questions that I think are essential to deciding whether the community wants districting at all. Glendale is the size of a Los Angeles city district. Glendale itself is a district, if you try to put it into perspective. Now, will each district have an equal number of schools? Will each district have an equal number of fire stations? Will each district have an equal number of libraries? The data that the consulting company is using to base its guidance and its advice on districts, will that be accessible to the public, for the public to use? And what's going to happen after districting happens? We have a mayor, city manager, form of government? Are we going to have vice mayor? Or are we going to have two vice mayors, like in some other cities? So there's a number of questions that still need to be asked on the election process, what happens after districting. And also, I strongly, strongly believe that we are moving extremely fast. Four meetings and just four outreach sessions is simply not enough. I think that we need to do more outreach and engage the community a lot more, and explain to them what to expect after districting happens. And what I absolutely don't want to see happen after districting, if this is to go through, is to take an entire community of the city and start chopping it up into districts to remove its power to elect representatives. And so I strongly believe that we should really think about this, slow down the process, and give the community an opportunity to decide whether it wants it before we go through with drawing the maps. And finally, I would also like to thank the city council for your comments regarding what to expect out of this, and to give a little more power to the community to determine and decide whether it wants to change its form of government or not. So thank you very much for your service, and thank you for this opportunity to address the council.
Thank you. Thank you. And we have callers?
We have five callers.
Okay.
Our first caller is Vahan Aladadi. Vahan, you're on air. You have three minutes. Vahan? Okay, I'll move on to the next person. Our next speaker is Mike Mohill. Mike, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. I'm sorry I have an idea this evening. This has been a project of mine since I ran for city council back in 2011. 2011, I saw at that time that every part of the city going up is not homogeneous, and the area at large, I figured was wrong. I've always said, we need council districts, and I'm happy, again, that we're discussing it this evening. Yes, there's going to be problems, but I think six districts is not enough. I've always thought we should have seven or nine. By having seven or nine districts, you don't have to worry about there's enough Latinos or Black people, or White people, Armenian, whatever. You know, I never thought of Glendale as being broken up that way. I thought of Glendale as being people. We're all people, okay? Now, it's the politicians who make it a racial town. But Glendale was never a racial town. Oh, someone would say it, okay? And Mr. Vartan was right. Up until about the year 2016, this wasn't a Democrat or Republican councilperson, but ever since the last few years, you have the Democratic Party using this as a way to move their candidates up the voting, up the ladder. But that's disgusting, but we're stuck with it right now. But I'm happy with doing council districts. It's about time, because by having it at large, it favors the people who live in North Glendale, and I'm part of that group. But because I live in part of that group, and live in East Glendale Canyon, my neighborhood benefits by that large, but not people in South Glendale. That's not right. That's not right. We have to -- I think we need seven or nine districts and an elected mayor for sure. The city, this thing about a ceremony of mayor is BS. We know what that means. I mean, you all fight about it. I don't want to be the mayor this time. Look at this Ellen Asatian. She's running for a higher office, and she wants to be the mayor so she can have that on her resume. So no ceremony of mayors ever. We need to have, for sure, an elected mayor approved by all the voters in Glendale. And by having seven or nine districts, you can make sure that there's equal representation of all the ethnic groups. Now, I never looked at council district based on ethnic groups or economics. I looked at council district as people who live in North Glendale have different interests than people living in South Glendale and west and so forth. We are a big melting pot here, Glendale. We don't have no one area only Latinos or blacks, pinks, or purples. We're all the same. And we need to think that way. Anybody who thinks otherwise, they're the racist. You know? We don't -- we don't -- Glendale's a good city. That's why I've been here since -- I've been here since age 12, and I just turned 81 last month. So I've seen the history of Glendale change.
Thank you, Mike. You're out of time. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for discussing.
Our next caller is Lauren Rosen. Our next caller is Lauren Rosen. Lauren, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hi. No, 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 no. This is -- have I been in a coma and I've woken up and I'm now in a twilight zone? Since when did the beautiful city of Glendale try to follow eagerly the footsteps of Los Angeles? I mean, what's going on here? Mr. Garpetian, who just got up and spoke, bravo, that you're exactly right. Mr. Mohill, I don't know where you are going with it. Unity, you're right. Glendale is one big city. And everybody, whether you're in South Glendale, North Glendale, east, west, everybody wants the same thing. We want safety. We want quality of life. We want a good place to raise a family. Can't all of you up there manage that? Do we really need to start dividing this beautiful city that so many people have tried so hard throughout the decades to make this a unified place? We're now going to start slicing and dicing, make it into little kingdoms? And you want to see corruption, Mr. Mohill, if you're listening? Because I know you like to follow that. There's going to be corruption in this city with each of these little kingdoms that this city now then will become. I'm saying, no, no, no. Take this to the people of Glendale to even see if they want to have districts. And yes, Mr. Mohill is right. You're absolutely right. This is becoming a political thing, and it is becoming very liberal. And you're slicing up our city, and I'm completely against it. And I encourage everybody to attend. This consultant who has come, I'm so sorry, he's licking his chops. You guys are throwing money at this consulting firm to figure out ways how to map, remap, redraw, this and that. I'm sorry, sir, you seem like a nice man. But enough is enough. Let's start at square one. Do we even want a districting? I say no, and I'm going to be at these events to say no. And invite all my friends. Thank you.
I don't know. Okay. Let's go to the next speaker.
Our next caller is Shirley Graham. Shirley, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Yes, hi. Shirley Graham. And I am against this 100%. I don't know where this came from. The people of the city of Glendale aren't going to know that they need to go to a website to look at this. Most of them aren't going to know what it's about, giving them choices. Okay, fine, let's give us choices first. And yes, this has to be done first before any mapping is done and any more money is thrown at this. Six plus an elected mayor, seven council members, or leave it alone, the way it is right now. Why are we talking about identifying ethnic areas, Latino areas, where Armenians constitute 50% of those areas? South Glendale, for instance. What are you going to do? Take your little map and cut Belmont from Mariposa and then go down Garfield and Acacia and identify those streets, one being Latino, one being Armenian? This is insane. This is not right. Council members, which council member is going to represent that one district? Isn't it going to be Armenians? Or is it going to be a Latino? And who's going to represent the other nationality? Who's going to represent the Armenians if there's a Latino council member representing that community? This is not going to work. People will not go on the website. So how do you propose to advertise this to the city of Glendale's community to learn what this is all about? I say no. Thank you very much.
Our next caller is Alexander Yessayans. Alexander, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Thank you. And thank you for the speakers who already explained some of the issues with the redistricting. I want to just add some things I haven't heard said. So I think a lot of people aren't aware that the reason that the city is preparing to do this is partially because the state of California legislature passed a law over 20 years ago, spearheaded by then, I believe, Assemblymember State Senator Richard Polanco, supported by the Mexican-American Legal Defense Fund, MALDA, and the American Civil Liberties Union, ACLU. And what that was, was the California Voting Rights Act. And what it did was it took the provisions in the federal Voting Rights Act and basically slanted them very heavily in the favor of people who sue cities. And it made it very easy to win lawsuits against cities and forced them to switch districting, even when the people voted no. Now, it's one thing to put these things to vote, for some people to believe in it, put it out, and then the city votes, yes or no, we want this. That's democracy. That's very different, okay? Well, who am I to say it's the wrong thing to do? If more than 50% of Glendale wants districts, good for you. But that's not what's happening. We're preparing ahead of time for the eventuality that a lawsuit is going to be brought against the city of Glendale, and we're going to be forced to switch. So it's better to have a plan than to not. That's messed up. That's wrong. So I encourage everybody to call your legislative representatives, because this is a legislative issue, and maybe we can get a legislative fix and repeal amendment to this dumb law. Contact State Senator Anthony Fortino, Assemblymember Laura Friedleman, if you live in her district, and contact Wendy Carrillo, if you live in her district, because Glendale now has two of the assembly districts. This is being forced on Glendale and other cities because of the legislation that was passed. In the meantime, let's all vote when this comes to a head. But otherwise, thank you everybody for coming out and speaking, and hopefully everybody can make their friends and the community aware of this so it doesn't just pass under the radar. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you. Final caller is Vahan Aladadi. Vahan, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hi there. Thank you for taking my call. City councilmembers, mayor, I would like to say that I'm no, no, no to districting. I think Glendale is one city. It's been a one city for 100 years. It's done very well. It's maybe around one of the safest cities, I would say, in the United States. Our city council members, with all the difficulties, budget issues, state budgets, federal budgets, we are incorporated city. Our charter has worked. It's working. There are no Hispanics, Armenians, Latinos, or Koreans, and so on, and so on. So it's a uniform city. We like to keep it the way it is. It works. We don't have to have all these little districts in fighting. You know, the British are masters of divide and conquer. And we don't -- it's going to be very difficult for 70 square miles, mostly mountains. You know, you've got to be nice to these people. You just can't sit there and bring me something up and then say, well, we're going to district this because there are a lot of disenfranchised people. Everybody gets services in Glendale. You call the fire department, you get services. You get the police department, you get services. So this city's work. No to districting. No, no, no. And it will definitely work because whether Armenian city council members or, you know, American city council members, we do not want districting in this town. This town is the best town that we live. I've been here since 1987, and we are saying no. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was our final caller.
That's our final caller. Okay. We can close the hearing at this point?
Yes, although, yes.
Okay. So we'll close the hearing, 9:21. And Mr. Garcia?
Thank you. I just, a couple of comments, just to reiterate Mr. Johnson's point. Well, preparing maps that incorporate as much public feedback input as possible and complying with the federal and California Voting Rights Act are not mutually exclusive. Everything will be done, to the greatest extent feasible, to get as much public input as we can, provide that information to you so you're hearing from the public on what these districts should look like, while at the same time making sure that we are reviewing it, both from Mr. Johnson, his staff, and the legal team that's working with us to review these maps, to make sure they're complying with all the laws. So I wanted to say that. Second thing is Ms. Micklon from City Manager's Office is coordinating the public outreach with Trepey Smith. So if you have any questions, we had the questions related to the social media outreach that's going to be conducted as part of that. She can probably address that a little bit tonight, if you'd like. And then the other comment I just wanted to make is, just so we're clear, so from the last discussion we had on May 2nd, the council's direction was clear to start this process looking at a transition to six council districts with a directly elected mayor. So if you want the public outreach process to include looking at both, then we need to hear from the council that you would like to look at that. If not, then we will proceed as previously directed with six council districts and a directly elected mayor. So I want to make sure that if you want to give us direction that's different than that, you do so tonight. That's all I have, Ms. Mayor.
I think one thing, as we go through this process, I think we want to make sure that we are explaining to people why we're looking at this, the kind of the legal framework that we're operating under. The fact that, at the end of the day, we will be putting a proposal on the ballot, but the voters can vote on that. We are not making a unilateral decision here whether to district or not. What we're doing is we're developing something that the voters can respond to that is concrete. And we have discussed this among ourselves on this dais many times, looking at alternatives. And our direction has been, and I would not be interested in changing that, but it has been, to develop a plan around six districts and an elected mayor. We have to bring one plan to the electorate and let the electorate decide whether they want to proceed with that. I'm still there. I don't want to start, you know, going out and saying we're going to have six different options for you to consider. I think that just creates a lot of chaos and confusion. I think we need to have one, and it's the one that, in our considered opinion, we think is the most suitable. So that's what I wanted to say. Councilmember Devine.
Yeah. I just want to say that the decision to do districts is, as you say, a legal issue. The unilateral decision is whether to have an elected mayor or not. That's the part of this decision, this process, that I think the people need to speak on. I don't think that's a decision that we should be making. I think that the general public should be making that decision. And that's where I stand on this.
Okay. Councilmember Katsakian, do you have any thoughts or comments?
Yes, I do, certainly. First of all, we are faced with the option of either going to districts or being sued and going to districts. If we simply move ahead with what other cities have done, what other agencies within our own city have done, it would be just five districts, and that would be the end of it. What I have long advocated for has been to expand the council, to have greater representation for our residents. You know, the question was asked, what has changed to make it better by former councilmember Vartan Garpetian, by those agencies that went to districts? People who couldn't afford to run for city offices before were able to run for city offices, either successful or unsuccessful. I think that's important. I think that there's a lot of folks in this community who would love to sit up here, who would love to sit on some of the other bodies, but didn't have money themselves that they could finance their own campaigns, like some candidates have done in this city. I think that greater representation is not something we should be worried about and use the fear tactics and demagoguery of, we don't want to be corrupt by L.A. Has Los Angeles had corruption? Absolutely. But guess what? There was corruption in this council chambers before as well. So, and also, I'm a little confused tonight about some of the comments about whether Glendale's a great city or whether it's gone to hell. We have to pick one or the other. I personally think it's a great city. I think there's nothing wrong with Glendale that can't be fixed with what's right with Glendale. No applause, please, 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 please. I think when we applaud, we take a time away from other comments and people who've stayed here a long time to be heard. So I think that we should move forward with the plan as it's been proposed. I think it's a good plan. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for presenting this. I think there's going to be a lot of learning that goes on, a lot of educating that must be done to, obviously, I mean, there's people here that I consider pretty well-informed who still don't have a clear grasp as to why we're doing this. And I think that having more representation on this council, having people have access to their officials is the right thing to do. So it is a legal process. Yes, it is. And we are being pushed into this because of that legal process. But we use the legal process to our advantage to be able to do something better, to strive for something better. I don't know. I think that's more or less my comments. I have other things I could say, but I'll save it for now.
Okay. Thank you.
The only comment I have, I think I made most of my comments earlier, is the four meetings that you had noted. If there are groups in our community that want to hold their own mapping party, would they be able to work with your firm to have these additional workshops or whatnot? My bigger concern is that it's a limited number of meetings that we're having to obtain input. And this is a very complex thing for an average citizen that is not involved on a daily basis. And so how we're providing the resources for them to be engaged is at least important to me, and I'm sure it is for my colleagues as well. But is there an opportunity for them to collaborate with your firm beyond the four meetings? So if we had a community organization come and say, we want to host something where we're going to do our own mapping party, and you would be able to provide at least the guidelines to them?
Perhaps I can address that. So just to be clear, we're having four public hearings before the council, as well as a fifth public hearing for the consideration of the actual maps. In addition to that, the city is sponsoring 14 community workshops that will be advertised extensively, and they'll be spread throughout the city or conducted virtually in addition. If the council desires more, and I will note that Trepey Smith will be here at the second public hearing to go into a little bit more detail about the outreach we will have done at that point, as well as explain what's in store for the future. And at that point, if the council wants to see some additional public outreach, then maybe that will be the appropriate time to provide some additional direction. But there will be an extensive community outreach component to this.
Okay.
And I would just add to what the secretary said. We collaborate with a lot of folks all the time, and we're available to, you know, talk to them on the phone. We tend to not go to specific organization meetings for two reasons. One is, we don't want to appear that we're favoring any group by going to one meeting or not. The other is that us or any city representative being at a group kind of can limit their discussion. You know, what we tend to do and what tends to work best is if there's one or two people in the group that are tech savvy, that will be the ones clicking on the mouse. We'll work with them. If they didn't get it at the forum, we will make sure they're fully technically capable so that at their meeting, they can discuss internally amongst themselves what they want to draw on a map without someone from the city or a representative being there. But it works really So, but it works really well, and we are fully happy to help anyone who has technical questions anytime.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kasakian?
I just want to ask the city attorney and get clarification. Is there anything that precludes us from publicly speaking out in support of this as council members?
No.
Okay.
Not at all.
All right. And if we were to write an editorial or an op-ed, there's nothing stopping us?
That's permissible. At the time, the, the matter gets placed on the ballot, there will be restrictions on us using city resources to advocate for the measures, but we will be able to provide information and, and pay for education. But yeah, in terms of individual council members speaking out, writing op-eds, it's...
Or against.
Or against. Yeah. Certainly, fair game.
Absolutely, fair game. And so, I also, in addition to that, I want to say, look, I know that folks are going to have a lot of opinions on this. I make myself available to members of the community twice a week at coffee office hours that I've been holding since I assumed office here on this dais. It's Tuesdays in Adams Hill, at the Adams Hill Mini Park, from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. on Friday, at the Coffee Bean in Montrose, on the corner of Honolulu and Ocean View. Anyone who wants to know why I support this and why I'm supporting the expanding of our democratic representation here on this dais, I'm happy to discuss and have a civil discussion with you on any of those days. And there's no appointments necessary, just show up. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And I think we all, in our different ways, make ourselves available. I also have recently started doing coffees, following in the footsteps of councilmember Kasakian. I do them once a week in different locations. And I think any of us are open to people coming in, in the office, making an appointment to come in and talk about it. This is really important stuff, and we want to get it right, and we want to explain our positions to, to the public to the best of our ability.
And I'll be doing chai lattes at 500, 500 North Brand Boulevard. There's a Starbucks, and I have to pick the date, and I'll let you all know about that.
Okay.
And you can find my email, my phone number, on our website.
Yes. And I'm sure councilmember Satrian is also always available. So, we are, I think, really a very, very accessible, excuse me, we are a very accessible group of people here. Just reach out. Let's have quiet, okay? Okay? We're an accessible group of people here. If anybody has tried to make an appointment with me and I have not responded, I would be very, very surprised, because I don't think it's ever happened. Okay. So, we need a resolution.
May I, may I request that when we make this resolution, that we include with the caveat that an elected mayor, yes or no, for or against, is included in all of the outreach, so that we know what the people want?
I want to understand what that means.
I would make the motion as is, without that. I think ultimately, the voters will decide whether they agree with it or not. If not, then there will be a movement towards five council districts, and that will be the end of it.
So that's an alternate or a substitute motion?
I think, no motion was made, so.
I'm making, I'm making the original motion.
Right. And just so we're clear, this is a revised motion that we, not revised based on discussion here, but we submitted a revision to the resolution to change, slightly change the timeline, moving the last two public hearings to October. So that was part of the, the agenda, so we're asking that you adopt that motion, that resolution. And councilmember Kasakian's moved it.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay. And we'll have a roll call then.
Councilmembers Satrian?
Yes.
Devine?
No.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Mayor Brotman?
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, if I can, just, just to clarify so everyone understands the motion, so, to councilmember Devine, Devine's point, this means that we won't put stuff in the outreach materials about 7/0? Obviously, if people want to come, they're free to say whatever they want and share whatever they want.
Yeah, city attorney Garcia.
Yeah, that's correct. Mr. Mayor, members of council, we'll be presenting the information as a sixth district plan with a directly-elected mayor. Obviously, people from the public will be free to comment that they don't want a directly-elected mayor, or they do, or they want more districts or less, but what the, what we are presenting to the public is what you've given us direction to do.
But isn't there a law that says that you can't combine two issues on a proposition before the public? One is districts, one is elected mayor.
Correct. Generally, that, I think that's correct. There's a, what's called a single-subject rule. However, I will note that in this case, in this case, given that they are, they are interrelated insofar as if you have six districts without a directly-elected mayor, some of our charter provisions will become internally inconsistent, we would propose this as one charter amendment. We'll look at it further, but we'll provide some additional information on that. But they are, they are, they do work together, because you can't have a, you really can't have a six, six council member district plan without a directly-elected mayor. You need seven, that's why.
How long's the term of the mayor?
The term, when we bring back the hearing in July, we will bring those options to you in terms of the role of a directly-elected mayor, what the proposed terms will be, what the proposed term limits will be, any other direction you want to provide us on the directly-elected mayor component of it, we'll provide that information to you initially in July, and then you provide some direction, and we'll bring it back to you.
Let's say you want district. You guys, I think we're doing this wrong. Let's say you want districts. Let's say someone from the public wants districts, but they don't want a mayor, they'll vote against the, the whole thing.
That, that is...
I think that's a problem. I don't want you, this is, we're not doing this the right way. I'm just, I'm just saying.
Okay.
We are...
Okay, we, we voted on the item, we're going to move on.
I do have, I have a comment with our city attorney.
Well...
I know we voted on it, but I, I need to get clarification before we move on.
Okay, please, please.
So, the duties of the mayor, the term limits, all of that, is going to be part of the discussion of this council after the hearings, correct?
Or at the same time, correct. So we will start that, that discussion in July, get direction from you, but when, when we have to put together, we would have to put together proposed charter amendments, we would propose that you consider those at the same time as you consider the, the district plan in October, and then that would be approved by you, if you approve it, and then it will go to the voters. So yes, you'll have multiple bites at this apple.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you, thank you. What is next?
Next is item 12, Discussion of Councilmember Future Agenda Requests. So, the first item is a request to agendize consideration of the launching of a city initiative to address dangerous divisive and hate speech in Glendale. Brotman?
Okay. And could I first ask the city attorney to explain this new procedure we have for agendizing items, because I think it's still new to people?
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, members of council, a couple of months ago, the council had a discussion about agendizing matters for future council discussion. Our, our process prior to that amendment was, a council member made a motion or made a request to agendize something, and if the second council member supported that, then we would put it on the agenda at a future date in coordination with the city manager and the mayor. Recently, the council adopted an amendment to the code, as well as its procedures, to provide that council member would ask for an agenda item to be agendized. We would bring that item back at the very next regular meeting, and then the, the council, it would need a second, and then the council have a discussion about whether or not to agendize, that have then, have the staff actually prepare a report and, for a future agenda item. So that's what this item is here, these three items that are on the agenda. We've reordered the agenda, renamed this, this new agenda item now, Discussion of Councilmember Future Agenda Requests. And with that, on this item, the floor is yours, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, so what we're doing here is discussing whether we bring an item back to council with a staff report for possible action. So I asked this to be agendized today, because I want support, and hopefully we'll get support from two of my colleagues, for staff to work on a report that would give us options to address the recent upsurge in dangerous divisive and hate speech in the city. And I think it's clear to everyone that there has been an upsurge in this type of speech. I don't want to be too prescriptive about how this looks, because that's the purpose of the staff memo and the discussion that we will have. However, I'm specifically thinking right now of three main things. Number one would be to reestablish the Human Relations Committee that we had at one time in the past. I don't know how long we had it, but we did have this committee, which was not a city commission. It was a committee made up of members of the public. I believe some of the council members or one or two council members would sit on this committee, and it got some staff support. So I would like to consider bringing that back, reviving that. And I see that as the primary forum for us to kind of develop any kinds of programs that we want to roll out. Another thing would be potentially partnering with the LA County Commission on Human Relations to adapt their current LA versus hate campaign to Glendale. And then, the final thought I have is to beef up our outreach, to inform residents how to report hate speech and hate crimes. A lot of hate speech and hate crimes go unreported. Not all of them are actionable from a law enforcement point of view. Obviously, if it's a crime, it is. If it's speech, it's First Amendment protected. But we do want to see these things reported. We do want to understand what's happening. It is important for threat assessment and for other reasons. So those are three possible elements, and maybe there's more that staff could present to us. So that was my intention with this. Questions, comments from my colleagues?
Without getting too specific, is this a result of some panel discussions that were held two or three weeks ago?
Panel discussions? No. This is because we've had a number of things. We've had, we had anti-Armenian flyers. We've had, yeah, we've had, we've had attacks on LGBTQ and, and the queer community. We've had, excuse me, remember? Excuse me, who's speaking? Okay. I'm going to give one more warning, okay? I don't want any outbursts from the audience. People have an opportunity to come up. You are going to be given time to speak. You will notice that none of us will interrupt you. We will give you the respect that you are due and hear what you have to say, and I ask that you give us the same respect. So, as I was saying, we've had a number of things. We've had also recently some anti-Semitic activities, but this is not new. We know we've had this in the community, this is in every community. It just feels like, to me, it's gotten to a point where we need to start being more thoughtful about how we prevent this type of thing from getting out of hand, and how we heal some of the divisions, which I think are really based on misunderstanding of one another, and I think that's what a Human Relations Committee can do for us. So that is my proposal.
I was around when the first Human Relations Committee, you know, I'm sounding like an old guy.
You were around for everything, I know that.
And it was a result of a murder at Hoover High School between a Latino and an Armenian, if I'm not mistaken. But I would, I would support a report, I would support a report on that and discuss it further at that time.
And if I may add, I haven't been around as long as you, but I remember when Mayor Eileen Givens brought up a, a Human Relations Committee similar to this, anti-Semitism, when the synagogue here in Glendale was vandalized. And it was Rabbi Carol Abrams, I believe was her name, fantastic rabbi. And they had put for, put together a committee, and it was quite successful. So I would, I would support this as well.
Okay. And the intent of this is not to get ahead of ourselves and get into a detailed discussion. That will occur when the item is brought back to us. However, because it's an agendized item, we take public comment. We have quite a few comments. Yes, I mean, yes, we do. I would think that there, you know, I would think there would be support for something that works to reduce hateful and divisive speech, but nonetheless, we have, how many cards? 12 cards?
We have 12 cards and one caller, however, we're experiencing an issue with Comrex at the moment, so we'll hopefully resolve it.
Okay, but I thought you said we have more callers?
Just one caller.
Oh, just one caller? Okay. So if we have just that, I'll give two minutes. I think that's, that's sufficient. Okay, so our first speaker is Alan Dish. Yes, councilmember Devine is reminding me, and your time hasn't started yet.
Yes.
But reminded me to please don't repeat the same thing that you're hearing everyone else said. If you have something, you know, new, that's going to add to the conversation, please contribute that, but there's no reason to say the same thing again and again. Thank you. Mr. Dish?
Good evening. Good evening, councilmembers. Allow me to, allow me to address you tonight as someone who has gone to school in Glendale and graduated from Clark Magnet as prom king. Allow me also to say that I am Armenian, and I respect Mr. Jordan Henry, that's why I want to criticize him. And so, I hope he will be inviting of this criticism, because I think, first of all, I unambiguously support LGBT topic. I also believe that Thelma Gonzalez and her mother should be addressed properly, and the other incidences that occurred in the city, which I think are being conflated too much into a bigger issue than it is. In the case of Jordan Henry, who is not Armenian, he says this. So I ask, why is he leading a group and claiming to be speaking on behalf of conservative Christian Armenian values? What, what right does he have, basically? Because he is mobilizing in a wrong way, this feature of Armenian identity, where we allow for like sexual and other things, but the idea is, we do it, but discreetly. And Mr. Jordan Henry, knowing this, has exploited it for his own purpose by making it into some kind of big communist plot. Now, I can tell you, they can laugh all they want, incidentally. It's very sad that the right is now behaving much how the left was once behaving, provoking those in power and so on. I'm not saying cancel him. Yes, invite him to a debate where he can provide evidence. Where does he see any kind of Marxism in any of what he is claiming? Again, I invite you, now let me just say, to conclude, don't be afraid, come back, join us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dish.
You will be pardoned for your anti-communist...
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Your time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rob? Rob, I can't make out the name. Shapiko? Shapla?
That's my lovely, I think it's Shapiro.
Shapiro?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Well, apparently my insomnia is cured. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, members of the council, I think that covers pretty much everybody except for staff. I'm here, and forgive me, I'm going to have to refute, refer to my notes. I'm here, basically, I'm a 12-year resident of Glendale, homeowner. Two of my children were born and raised here, they go to school here. I love this city, genuinely love this city. On the voting placard at my polling place were four different languages, Armenian, Korean, Spanish, and English. There are smells that I've never smelled before that my neighbors cook, and it usually is pretty good. That's my Glendale. It's a quiet, very plural place. That is why I find it so profoundly offensive that outside agitators have come to my city to gin up violence and division. We are going to disagree on things, and I know you agree with me, so I'm addressing the crowd as well. We are going to disagree on things. We have different points of view. That's what makes a city. Screaming and yelling and throwing punches does not make a city. That makes a mob. And it is intolerable that it is happening in my city and in your city, and I know you know this. You have my full support. Glendale USD has my full support. The Armenian community, who are my friends and my neighbors, have my full support. My LGBTQT+ friends have my full support. My teachers have their full support. My full, my full support, excuse me. And whatever I can do... And whatever I can do, as a fellow citizen and as a member of this community, I will happily do.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is, let's please refrain from clapping, thank you, Jordan Henry. Excuse me. Please show the respect that's due this body.
Thank you. I'm here to speak tonight. I do not, I hope that you do not agendize this item. He is abusing, Dan Brotman is abusing words to manipulate the public into this agenda. We do not hate. Nobody in this group hates, but what we do hate is your incorrect definition of hate. You are not the arbiter of truth. You call us, you say that we are spreading disinformation. That is spreading disinformation, Dan. You have not engaged with any of our claims. Thelma Gonzalez came here and told you about how she was harassed, about how government employees were discriminating against her based on her private religious views. None of you gave her the time of day. You said there was no jurisdiction, no justification that allowed you to speak on those issues, and there you are commenting on GUSD, Dan. Antifa was here. A man was arrested, who was previously arrested for sexually abusing a 14-year-old child, and you did not condemn them. They are outside agitators. We have video evidence, hours of it, of them provoking Armenians and people, and other people in the community. Dan, I called you out on Facebook and you blocked me. Dan, that is illegal. It violates case law, First Amendment. The First Amendment protects my speech against you as an elected official on social media. I know you will not look at me as I am telling you this. Dan, you said, as a father, in your public statement, you said, "As a father, I am heartbroken to witness parents become vehicles of hate." As a father, Dan, define father. What is a father? What is it? Can Glendale Unified define that? Can you define father tonight, Dan? I don't think so. It's a matter of time before this divisive rhetoric that you're spreading is used against you, Dan.
Hey, your time is up. Thank you very much.
No, thank you, Dan.
Next speaker is Alec Belikian. Just show some respect. Alec Belikian. Alex, sorry.
Hi, I'd like to voice my opposition to your move to address divisive, dangerous hate speech. I know your intentions are in the right place. You saw those flyers. You want to do something about them. But I'm concerned that if this action is poorly executed, then it would label what I say next as hate speech. I'm a physician of 20 years' experience. I'm a well-published researcher. Based on the wealth of scientific data, it is my scientific conclusion, not my belief, it is my conclusion that there are two sexes, male and female, and in humans, that is a man and a woman. And a man cannot turn into a woman. If a man tries, that man is a trans woman. A trans woman is not a woman. A trans woman is a trans woman. And that is my conclusion based on the available data. So based on what this council has said before, this statement is different from how you all think. So naturally, we are divided on the issue. So when I hear that you want Glendale to address divisive, dangerous hate speech, I wonder whether you're going to label what I just said, my scientific conclusion, as hate speech. We all know who the loudest people in the room are when it comes to these types of social issues. And the loudest people in the room tend to get their way. And they often like to label anybody whose views differ from theirs as alt-right. And Mayor Brotman's initiative will give them agency to do just that. One of the cornerstones of my campaign for Congress is smaller government, less government overreach. I do not want to live in a Glendale where Dan Brotman and a city council, who are led by a fringe, aggressive ideology, have the rights to tell me my statements are dangerous, divisive hate speech. That is not okay. It's a really slippery slope down to censorship and authoritarianism. And if you want to persuade people, you do through engagement, education, cooperation, and outreach. You do not stifle their free speech by arbitrarily labeling it as hate speech. That is not consistent with the principles that this country is based on. And before we take one step towards authoritarianism, I want to voice my opinion and nip it in the bud. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Kusak. Lisa Kusak, not here.
I'm at home.
What's that? No, 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 I'm just not sure what to do about this.
Good evening. First Amendment freedoms are most in danger when the government seeks control through or to justify its laws for the impermissible end. The right to think is the beginning of freedom. And speech must be protected from the government because speech is the beginning of thought. Mayor, let's talk about misinformation. Without knowing the facts, you were quickly, to jump on your Instagram or wherever that was, to label parents, talk about violence. You weren't even there. How did you know that? How did you know what happened? So, what are the parents after? The meeting wasn't about the LGBTQ month or anything like that, so let's clarify some facts. The meeting, the core issue was parental rights. As we have said over and over again, parents should have the right to choose when their kids learn about sexuality. We were not there to protest the board voting on the LGBTQ month. We were there and have been there for years protesting the board's decision to allow sexualization of kids. When a teacher starts talking to kids about scissoring and the first time she felt tingles down there, that's when we, as parents, have problems. When the board says parents don't have the right to be told if their kids want to change genders and they can hide that from them, that's when the parents have problems. When a biological boy can change his gender whenever he feels like it, back and forth and dress in the girls' locker room, that's when the parents have a problem. When a special needs student has a hard time figuring out the correct pronouns to use as she gets reprimanded, that's where we have a problem. You can smile all you want. When a psychologist, whose wife is advisor to the LGBTQ club, gives her list of vulnerable kids to poach that she should talk to, that's when we have a problem. We don't have a problem with the LGBTQ community.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak. As a parent that has been attending all the school board meetings in the last several months, I am here to ask for the explanation of what hate speech and transphobia that the mayor has witnessed. I am here to urge the mayor and all council members to condemn the Antifa infiltration on our board meeting last week. The mayor had nothing to say about the infiltration and everything to say about how hateful its constituents are. Mind you, mayor, all of the parents that were there were unmasked. Everyone that was infiltrating our meeting was geared in combat gear and helmets. One of the three arrests during the school board meeting protest was known Antifa member Eric Boyd, who got arrested for sexually abusing a 14-year-old. Did you condemn him? Another person that got arrested out of the three is Joseph, a concerned parent who is sitting in this room with us. The third person was a random bystander who was laying in front of the cops, and they took him away. He's also here. None of which are Proud Boys, so I'm just clarifying the misinformation that no Proud Boys were arrested. You have not listed, you have not listened to one parent's board meeting speech, you have not been to any of the board meetings, yet you call the parents who are concerned about their children not being sexualized in school, transphobic, and bigots. I think you're the bigot for not accepting the parents and their religious beliefs. You were so quick to wash your hands of Thelma's problems because they were GUSD problems, but you're constructing a bill for a GUSD problem now. Make it make sense. You have no idea what's going on in GUSD, and you said your hands are tied, so let them be tied.
Thank you. Okay. Next speaker is C. Messa. Not here.
Who?
Next speaker, Ray Shelton.
Earlier today, you asked parents to talk to administrators to reach answers, but the administrators don't answer. The school board doesn't answer the parents. They ignore them in the same way that you do. They engage in misdirection. There are boys in the girls' showers. There are girls in the boys' showers. They just say, "Well, we don't call them boys, even if they have a dick. We'll just call them girls." There is compelled speech in the GSUD. If you do not use the preferred pronouns, you will be fired. If students do not use the preferred pronouns, they will be expelled. This is America, not the Soviet Union. They use misdirection in terms of grooming young children. In the books, I have seen them. I have been a teacher in GSUD for 25 years with many, many awards. I have seen it. They also engage in deception. For example, Governor Newsom met in secret with Vivian Etienne today in order to plan how to silence parents. Yes, that's right. There is nothing homophobic or gay about what these parents are doing. As a gay man, I have fought for the individual rights of gay Americans for all of my life. You know nothing about the gay people, Brotman, nothing. There is no such thing as an LGBTQ+ community. I am not a lesbian. I am not bisexual. I am not queer, which was an insult when all of you, you all know that queer is an insult. It's disgusting. Also, in the last seven seconds, I should say that districts based on racial segregation is racial segregation. You are racist.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Margaret V.
Thank you. I'm a Glendale resident, a GUSD alum, an immigrant, an Armenian, and a parent of a future GUSD student. I'm here to first and foremost thank the leadership of the city, including all of you, for bringing us into the 21st century with countless initiatives that are slowly distancing Glendale from its profoundly depressing history. As a KKK and neo-Nazi hub, a sundown town, and a place where racial and ethnic discrimination and violence continue, unfortunately, to this day. I love seeing the building lit up, as it is tonight, and on other nights throughout the year, to let different members of our community know that they are seen. I'm still formulating the words to describe and understand the ugliness I've seen in this city as of late. It is surreal to see the dysfunction and disrespect that plagues more and more of this country, happening minutes from my home. Anti-Armenian sentiment is nothing new in this town, but the homophobia on display right now is, for me, unprecedented and unacceptable. I want to make it, shut up! I want to make it very clear that it is not an aspect of Armenian culture or tradition to discriminate against others. I want to make it clear that people in this room and at the school board last week and on the internet represent no one but themselves. Shut up! That includes nefarious, random dudes that have shown up here in the last few years to try and make a name for themselves by manipulating, radicalizing, and weaponizing the Armenian community and Glendale citizens at large. Let it be known that we see what you're doing, and you're not going to get away with it. To all these dudes, some of whom are in this room, please keep my people's name out of your mouth. Mayor Brotman, I support this initiative wholeheartedly. Glendale needs to seriously start checking itself on acts of hate, all hate. There's way too much of it here, and that's been the case since I was a kid. It's pretty easy to identify hate speech. Nothing about it is arbitrary. Let's create more things to be proud of in Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, please.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Mayor Brotman, with all due respect, I am disturbed by your suggestion that the city council bring in the government to monitor speech. You say you want the city government to address, quote, "dangerous, divisive, and hate speech." How would this language be defined? Who would be defining it? For example, recently, a teacher at Glendale Unified, whose name I will not mention, wrote a post on the GUSD Facebook page, which compared concerned and peaceful parents legally attending a school board meeting to, and I quote, "a room full of Nazis." Surely, this can be classified as a hateful and divisive comment. Would the city council investigate this teacher? In an Instagram post, you wrote, Mayor Brotman, that you are, quote, "committed to fostering a safe and inclusive environment for all residents." However, you also write that Glendale parents have become, quote, "vehicles of hate." Which parents? What precisely did they say that you define as hate and would suggest to be addressed by the power of the government? You speak against division and for unity while at the same time labeling a large segment of your constituents as vehicles of hate. Political speech is by its very definition divisive. That is how problems are solved and positive solutions achieved. To bring the government in against, quote, "divisive speech" is to attack and to assault political discussion and debate. This is undemocratic, unconstitutional, and quite dangerous. How can a government monitor or control any speech and still claim to represent a free and democratic society? Nor do you protect city residents by calling them names and threatening to punish their free speech. The role of the city council is to respect and protect all of its residents, not merely those who you happen to agree with. In a Facebook post, you write that the time for, quote, "both-sidism" is over. But what does that mean? It is difficult to imagine speech more divisive than a mayor of a city publicly aligning himself against many of his constituents. I hope that the leaders of this city continue to promote unity and peace.
Thank you very much.
But peace and unity can only be achieved if everyone has the right and freedom to express disagreement. Thank you.
Next speaker, Margaret V. Followed by, let me just say these now because the clapping makes it difficult, followed by C. Messa, and after that, Joseph Marashli.
Hi, everybody. First, I have a question to Dan Brotman. Why are you deleting the questions and comments of Ask the Parents from your Facebook pages, and you're not responding? Disagreement is not hate. We all have the right to exercise our amendment right to speak our minds, right? For a civilization to succeed, we need healthy families. Families where there are males and females, who are healthy and reproductive, two sexes only, who are capable of having kids. This is an objective truth. This country fought hard to create a civilized country like ours right now and created a wonderful and powerful constitution that protects truth. But some of the people, even now, sitting on this board, I don't know how many of you, have different interests. Those interests are driven by hate towards objective truths, by hate towards normal functioning and loving families. Some of you hate to see our parents educating their children what normative ways of lives are. You hate people who are educated because it's easier to control uneducated. It's easier to control weak, sick, and mentally unstable people, so you do not care anymore about teaching the future generation true biology, true history, logic, math, and other sciences. By allowing and supporting school curriculums that teach, promote, and encourage sex change therapies, hormone-blocking therapies, and sex organ surgeries, you are mutilating, butchering a whole generation of healthy children and teens. There are hundreds of research coming out from Europe especially, showing how damaging and horrifying the LGBTQ+ agendas are. The LGBTQ+ agenda is a hate agenda. Those who support LGBTQ+ agenda are part of a mass child genocide and a mass child holocaust that is happening in our country, and you're becoming a part of that.
She's a boy. She should be speaking.
Good evening.
Good evening, council members. My name is Joseph, and I was born and raised in Glendale, California. I have lived in the city a large majority of my life and currently have properties in the city while being a taxpayer. I attended Columbus Elementary School, Toll Middle School, and graduated from Hoover High School. Being a product of this city, I am ashamed of what I am witnessing regarding the division and the claim that concerned parents are somehow conducting hate speech while completely ignoring the presence of a well-known terrorist organization called Antifa, with Antifa members in the hundreds during the June 6th meeting. I want to be extremely clear that the parents present during the June 6th GUSD meeting have no hate towards the LGBTQ community. And any claim otherwise is simply a talking point used to cause further division within the community to fit a narrative smearing the true issue at hand, which is the exposure of inappropriate content at schools and the non-transparency with the parents in the community. I was present during the GUSD protest along with thousands of other concerned parents, and we all witnessed how outside forces, specifically Antifa, was present picking fights with peaceful protesters which never had an incident at any of these meetings in the past. I know because I was there. We are here to demand that this council condemn Antifa and their presence in this community and to take steps to ensure no such terrorist organization causes such chaos as they did on June 6th. Furthermore, we demand that you condemn any and all mistreatment of children at GUSD, such as the mistreatment of Thoma Gonzalez, you who was harassed and discriminated against by your own Glendale schoolteachers and administrators. Schools are not meant to be... Schools are meant to be a safe haven for learning and preparing our children for their future, not this.
Thank you. Your time is up. Lastly, was there a C. Messa that's here? Somebody... Excuse me. C. Messa. Sir, if you can't control yourself, please leave the chamber. C. Messa.
First of all, I'd like to thank the two council members who actually looked at footage and did some research on what happened at the board meeting. Thank you very much, council members, for agreeing that there was Antifa there. Mr. Brotman, it was pretty obvious all you have to do is look at people that have helmets on and that are covering their face, that they're agitators. The parents are not agitators. Considering that the statements have been made by the two city council members at your site, I ask you to rescind your initiative to silence dissent by calling opposition of those people who call opposition to gender ideology hate speech. Gender ide... I'm sorry. If you want to inject yourself into GUSD parental concerns, please admonish GUSD administration's conflict of interest with gender ideology organizations who come to the school and give presentations to the teachers that have to do with gender transition surgeries. There is a... The person who gave this presentation is Dr. Olsen Kennedy, who is married to the person who is the head of CHLA transition surgeries. So what is going on there? Are we trying to make a pipeline? Is that what the teachers are going to be teaching the kids on these gender transition surgeries? I don't understand why that would be something that a teacher has to be presented. So I'm just going to ask you to rescind this agenda on hate speech. Thank you.
We have several callers. Our first caller is Guyane T.
Please go up and speak to the city clerk. Okay. What was your name? What's your name?
Gav Chumayan. Is there a Gav Chumayan? That's fine.
Okay, please, Gav Chumayan.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm a proud product of the Glendale school system that it once was. Till this day, I remain friends with the same group of people that I met in high school, one of which is gay and another has recently came out to us as transgender. And yet, my friendship with them is strong and has not changed. I want to make it clear that the proud parents here in this community who are taking a stand against the school board, whether they're Armenian, Latinx, or from other various cultural... diverse cultural backgrounds, have no hate against LGBTQ community. Unfortunately, the media has painted a picture that we're conducting hate speech against LGBTQ community and that we're opposed to them. I'd like to clearly state that we are not. We are, however, opposed to a school district attempting to introduce, or rather push, a curriculum that completely goes against our family values, our culture, and our core beliefs. Now, I remember being in high school when we were taught sex education. And mind you, we can only participate with parental consent, and that is not being done here. However, the school board system today is attempting to push material about gender affirmation and gender identity to children in elementary schools and middle schools. We're talking about children's health books with illustrations of two members of the same sex in bed on top of each other. We're talking about six-year-olds, seven, eight, nine, 10-year-olds. It's being told in elementary schools. And this is being done so without parental consent. Mayor, you issued a public statement regarding the events that took place at the school board meeting in which you stated that you condemned the hate speech directed at the school board and the LGBTQ community. Now, I don't condone that kind of behavior or speech as well because I was raised right and I know the difference between right and wrong. However, there is no mention of the violent behaviors caused by the real perpetrators of that violence that occurred, that being of Antifa, who we all know their only purpose is to cause disruption and chaos. Not one member of your council issued a public statement condemning their actions. And to be honest, it's quite disheartening because most of you came from rich ethnic, cultural, and religious backgrounds.
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Let's go to the callers.
Our first caller is Guyane T. Guyane, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, great. I'm calling in regarding to the comments Mayor Brotman said earlier today when Jordan Henry was announcing the community. Mayor Brotman, you are not the city of Glendale. You are a council member that happens to temporarily be the mayor now. You are on TV saying the city does not support the gathering that Jordan Henry was saying, and that is misinformation. You can say that you do not support it, but you cannot say the city doesn't support it. You are not the city. So stop spewing your power trip and put the gavel down. You are the one that is hating. Everyone on TV saw the hate in your eyes with people that you do not agree with. You are spreading misinformation by saying things like that. It is dividing people because you cannot talk on behalf of the city in whole. Have you not seen the citizens in the city? If you're talking about the city in itself, then you are talking about the majority. And you know very well that the majority does not support the hidden agenda GUSD has in place. You certainly are not a teacher at GUSD. You are not a parent to a student in GUSD. Your children have not come home from school telling you uncomfortable and horrible stories they see going on at school and in their educational materials. You were not there during the lockdowns when parents witnessed their children on Zoom watching speakers talk nasty about police officers and how police hate black people. You were not there when these parents have been attending these GUSD meetings for three years now. Not once have we seen you or any of those council members sitting in those chairs attend any of these meetings in support of these parents. Have you taken the time to ask these parents, "Why are they protesting? Aren't these people your constituents too?" You can just say, like Najarian said, "That's his opinion, right or wrong." But you cannot say that the city of Glendale doesn't support it. You were pushing support of banning plastic forks and spoon on small businesses, which in turn delivered left-wing extremists collectively vandalizing...
Thank you, Guyane. You're out of time. Thank you for your comments. Our next caller is Morin Rosen. Morin, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Yeah, thank you so much. Wow, what a crazy night tonight. I didn't expect to be making two phone calls, but I want to first say to everybody in that room there, you look around, there's maybe just about 10 of you, 15 of you. I want you to know that you're speaking for thousands of us in Glendale who hear you and are supporting and cheering you from the TV screen. Mayor Brotman?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
So I'm the pro tem. He doesn't have to be in the room, but let the speaker continue.
Please, I'd like to have my time...
There's a TV in the back that plays the remarks.
Mayor Brotman and Ms. Asatryan, you do not... And this is really shocking tonight from what I'm watching. You just do not have your finger on the pulse of this community. I mean, that's what's shocking. You just absolutely don't. Today, I was listening, just like the previous caller. I was trying to get some information about community news. And when Jordan Henry got up to tell me about a rally, well, I was interested about it. And I was thinking about going to it. And then I had to hear my mayor say that what Mr. Henry was saying was disinformation. Now, this same mayor is the one that's presenting a request to agendize what is dangerous, divisive, and hate speech in Glendale. I'm going to say, get that off right now. And I'm going to ask every one of the city council members up there to instead, instead of that request, I'd like for all of you today, condemn Antifa. Make a motion right now and condemn Antifa's involvement in what they did the other day in our beautiful city of Glendale.
Thank you for your comments. Our next caller is Karen Kachler. Karen, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone in the room and the city council and the mayor. So I was present at the GUSD school board meeting last Tuesday. I was also in the parking lot. And I was simply going there to observe what is going on. And I was shocked what the media coverage was showing. It was very inaccurate. And I was one of the people that was standing on the sidewalk peacefully. We didn't say one word. And we were almost circled in by the police with batons in front of them. And people were shouting at our group with, "You're perverts," and so on and so forth. And it was really... I understand so deeply the frustration and the fear of the parents that are feeling steamrolled by the California state because that's what GUSD is following. They follow the rules from higher up. It's not what they personally sought out to do. It is them following their laws. And I wanted to say what I noticed is that what we sorely missed is accurate human development education. And that doesn't necessarily include sex or gender education, but human development, meaning where we come from, our evolution, our brain development, our nervous systems, and how to peacefully socially engage with each other to solve problems and not with violence and with screaming. And so from my vantage point, what I was observing was that people dressed in black and white, I've noticed several small aggressive and agitated assaults against other people that did not seem to belong to the black and white dressed people. And so there were like 300 in the end.
Thank you, Karen. You're out of time. Thank you very much. Our next caller is Mike Mohill. Mike, you're on air. You have two minutes. Go ahead, Mike.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. First of all, I want to... I'd like to apologize to the people in the viewing... in the audience there that I can't be there to join you with your disgust with our mayor and the councilman Asatryan. But you know that... You know who was the first speaker who spoke that night at GUSD? Was our city clerk, Susie Abadji. Isn't that a coincidence? Why, of all these people, it was her who spoke first? I also know that the whole far-left spoke and consumed most of the room in GUSD. Because I was there, council members, with the people who were in the viewing audience. They're not hateful people. The hateful people are the ones who keep accusing the people are hateful. We don't hate anybody. You have to be taught to love and hate. These people in the audience have been learned. They were not here and hate. These people in the audience have been learned. They were not here because they had to be here by an organization called the Democratic Party. They were parents who were concerned how their children are being raised in Glendale. I have no kids. I'm a good uncle, at least I think I am. And I know that parents should have the first authority, not people like a, like a school teacher or an administrator. They should leave their children alone. Sex education belongs in the home. It's always been that way. That's why I learned the birds and the bees, not at, at an elementary school. Whoever heard of that? This is the new world today. You want to teach kids about sex education, all kinds of sex before they're age 13. This is disgusting. Let kids be children like you were. Mr. Bronson, were you ever a child? I wonder. And I want to, I want to take my hat off again.
You're out of time. Thank you for your comments. Our next caller is Alec Deravanesian. Alec, you're on air. You have two minutes.
First of all, I want to say I don't hate anybody. I don't hate, I don't, I don't hate LGBTQ community, but I just want them to leave me alone. Don't shove their agenda down my throat. Enough is enough. Do whatever you want to do. This is a free country. And just, how come after this school incident that Antifa came and started this all fight or whatever brawl, now, all of a sudden, you guys are launching a city initiative to address dangerous divisive and hate speech? What do you mean by hate speech? Now we have to carry a kind of a little dictionary or something in our pockets to make sure that what we say, I mean, this is, this is, another person said, this is not a Soviet Union. We just came to this country just because of the, the freedom. So, I don't know. The, and all of a sudden, I, I can, it was very obvious that Mr. Bronson and the council members Satrian and Ardi, they were all together in this 3-2-2. And no wonder that Bronson and Ardi see each other once a week or whatever, they have a meeting together or something. Planning what? To restrict our speech? I lived in this, in this city for 47 years. This was one of the best cities and still is.
Thank you for your comments. You're out of time. Our next caller is Monica Corales. Monica, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Buenas noches. Good evening, everyone. I am a Glendale resident for 16 years. I am an immigrant, soy n migrante, and I call to give my support to the initiative to address dangerous divisive and hate speech. My First Amendment is being violated by the fear tactics used by hate groups over our community that want the community scared to not show up. Before, I was told we don't hate nobody. Minutes later, I was threatened by a man, by a man from that group that isn't there in the line of Glendale Unified School District 4 million of May 16. The same men mocked my Hispanic accent. And later, in the same meeting, the woman who recently spoke named Hasnik physically attacked me inside the meeting, trying to take my phone and slap it in my hand and try to take it away from me during, during the same board meeting. I was calling names. How after this can I show up for a board meeting, for example, or specifically in the city council meeting, being safe among them? I've been called groomer and pedophile as many other parents and residents in Glendale Unified School District. And after this will be commented, I'm making right now. I'm worried for my safety, but I have courage. They want to silence parents and residents from our beautiful Glendale, and this has to stop. The First Amendment doesn't give people the right to intimidate, harass, and silence the community by their tactics. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next caller is Angie Berger. Angie, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Yes, thank you so much. First of all, I just want to say, wow, that was a lot of courage from the residents before me, and I just want to give love. I'm a mom. I'm a domestic violence survivor, and I'm also a sexual assault survivor. I grew up in Washington, DC, and I'm in the music industry, and I came here. But I'm a single parent. I moved to Glendale because I felt like it was a beautiful place, and it reminded me of where I grew up, families, and just a safe space for me and my children. I was really fortunate to come here. I was also doing a lot of things that I needed to stop doing, and I was supported by the Child Protective Services, Glendale Police, and the school system. I just want to say personally, as a neutral party and as somebody who thinks that we need to go back to basics, when we were growing up, there was a school directory. I don't know any of these parents. Sometimes my children come home and say, mommy, I want to hang out with my friends. I say, I don't know how to get in touch. We're all so closed off. I want to say thank you to everyone sitting here at that, you know, this table, all of these people, they do care. We can't make a villain out of Mayor Bronson or the police department or any of these people here. We have to work together. Why are we calling this Glendale Unified? Why are we not calling it Glendale Divided at this point? We have to go back to basics and take accountability as parents. We're setting a horrible example for our children, fighting. They turn on the news, they have their tablets. We need to talk first before we even say our children's names. I support everyone in anything. I also talked to my children at a very young age about sex because it was so closed off, and that's how I believed that I was assaulted as a child. Parents, not their fault. But I think we need to take accountability. We have children, but we're raising adults. Thank you, Mayor Bronson.
Before you call the, the next caller, we're not taking any more calls or cards on this item.
Cheryl? Cheryl Schmidt? Go ahead.
Yes, I'm a mother of three. I live in La Prisenta. I went to GUSD my whole, almost my whole life, second grade to 12th grade. So I'm calling as a parent today. I was there on Tuesday, and I was standing on the side of the parents at the GUSD school board meeting. Antifa sure was there and others, and they were yelling, they were wearing helmets and riot gear, and they were yelling, Christian fascists go home, over and over and over for two hours. And I think the city council needs to issue a statement about this hate incident against Christians. Are you going to stand with us Christians, or is it just one-sided here? And as we know, the Glendale Police Department, you know, issued that statement about that car being vandalized that had Armenian flags on it, and it was keyed all up with pride and LGBTQ and stop hating and it's okay to be queer. So my kids were in GUSD, but I had to pull them out because of all this mess. They were only in there for one year, even though we relocated and moved to La Prisenta, thinking, you know, that they could go to good schools here. Sex shouldn't be taught in schools, the three ways, the anal sex, oral sex, and scissoring of all things. I didn't even know what scissoring was until a few weeks ago. So if we're bringing that up as parents, that's not hate speech. That's us voicing our opinions, and we should be able to. And there was a group of lesbians that were standing on our side last week because they agree with us that this should not be taught in schools, and we're not doing hate speech when we bring it up. Can't we get back to ADCs and the three Rs? And this city council is adding to the division that we see here because you are one-sided. And I'm really disappointed in the statements that you guys have put out. It's biased and one-sided. And what about hate against Christians? Are you going to stand up for the many, many, many Christians that are in this city, Korean, Armenian, white, you name it? We want you to be on our side as well and represent us because we vote you in. So we expect better from you guys. Thank you.
That's our last, that's our last caller. Okay. So now, I guess I will look for, well, I need two, two seconds. Do I have them?
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. On its face, this is a very benign agenda request, but I think it's clear that it's causing some angst in the community and that it's going to be used, and that it's going to be used as a weapon against them. And I know that might not be your intent, but clearly, this is going to, you know, inflame the situation. I would suggest we put this off until things settle down in the community at this time.
I think this is the very reason why we need to do this. So.
Can I recommend something? Maybe we can entertain something. I think it's the language in which this is being described as that is creating this issue. If we are, is this better? Okay. If we're talking about creating a human relations commission or a committee that allows our community members to come together to talk about what each of them want, you know, that public debate is part of the fabric of this nation. So I think it's not, I think it's a matter of how we're phrasing it. And you're talking about creating a human relations commission that addresses all of these issues. And if that is our intent, then perhaps that is how we need to phrase it. I think we are living in a time where emotions are very, very high in our community, and being able to use the words that bring people together, for them to have these difficult conversations, for us to move forward together as a community is very, very important. And so I, I wholeheartedly support some formats that we create, whether it's a human relations committee that allows for our community members to come together and talk about these things. But I think as leaders, we have to be mindful of the times that we're living in and how words that we used last week do not mean the same thing that we're using as this week. The last week has been, sir, and I believe somebody was yelling out about me saying something to you or about you. I wanted to note if, if somehow it was misunderstood before this meeting, and of course, not when I put out my statement, I checked with our police chief. If I'm speaking now, sir. If I may, if I may. I did, I checked with our chief and asked who the agitators were that came into our city to disrupt our city. And the answer that I received was that there were both Antifa and the Proud Boys that were present in our city. That's not, that's not my, that's not, that's not something that I sat there and I made up.
Excuse me.
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. What I did say is, no Glendale parent, no Glendale parent was arrested. So. Okay, so we're going to have to go back because I said no Glendale parent. But, but I'm not having a conversation with you now. Okay. But what I, what I am suggesting is that, you know, if it is a human relations committee and how we're wording this, I would be in all support of it. If we're, pardon?
Don't, don't enter into a discussion. It's not what we do here. Okay. So do I have your support?
If we are phrasing it as that, then you have my support.
Yes.
Mayor Bronson, Mayor City Council, your initial initiation of this conversation, you had identified or delineated three items. So one of them was the potential for a formation of a human relations coalition. So if that's what Councilmember Satrian is supporting, there are two others, two others for sake of clarification, so that it'll give me and staff a better framework as to how to write the staff report.
The other two elements were, I wanted to be working with the LA County Human Relations Commission, who we've had some discussions with. They have a robust program in Los Angeles, and I would like to talk to them about seeing what elements of that we can adopt here in Glendale that would help calm the situation. So that is part of it. And the third part of it is more outreach about reporting on hate speech and hate crimes, which I think is very important because we know that these things are very much underreported. Those are the three things that I would like to do. And.
I just heard support for one of them from Councilmember Satrian, so that's, that's why I'm asking.
You don't support working with the LA County Human Relations Commission?
I'm fine with us working with the Human Relations Committee, but I don't know what the details of that campaign are, and so I can't commit to something that I haven't read, right? And so if it's coming back as a report, I'm more than happy to review that, but I can't put my name on something that I'm not sure.
You're not committing to anything. Remember what we're doing here is we're asking staff to go out and prepare a report and bring it back. So we will have ample opportunity to look at options, discuss the options, and decide exactly.
Can we just like take a pause? I'm assuming you guys are adults act like it. This, this is a, this is a council chamber intended.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm done. I'm done.
I think we've given a lot of, Mr. Mayor, I gotta tell you, you know, the opinions aside, we have to have some decorum within these chambers. And I think we've all followed that decorum.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just say, I, I think you've been more than patient. The council's been more than patient. You've given warnings. Other council members have given warnings. If, if, you know, the folks in the audience do not wish to continue, wish to continue interrupting you, I think you're within your right to clear the chambers and continue the meeting without an audience. But again, that's, you know, that's a measure you can take. You can ask them again to please, please not interrupt, not interject. The council respectfully heard from each of you who wanted to speak, let you speak, did not interrupt you. And so at this point, it's up to you, but I, I agree with Councilmember Satrian. At this point, you know, the, we've let, we've kind of lost control here a little bit, and certainly up to you with what next steps you want to take.
Okay. Well, I'll let Councilmember Satrian finish. I want to get two seconds on this so that we can move forward to the next item.
Look, I will, I will say this, that if I was on the fence about anything, and by the way, I haven't been, but if I was on the fence, certainly this evening has, has convinced me that we need some format and some body that discusses how we are civil towards each other, how we respect each other, how we choose our words carefully to express our ideas. And if that means bringing in a county body that has experience in this, if that means establishing a body that helps individuals in this community discuss norms of interaction and conduct, which by the way, we have not seen this evening. We have not seen this evening. Sir, you can give the thumbs up sign all you want, but you know, quite honestly, you know, there's, I think, certain things that we are taught from a very young age as to how to behave in a room, in a place of respect, in the house of government. And you have all completely flaunted and ignored those. And I'll tell you, I haven't said much on this topic, but I am a parent of a child in Glendale Unified School District, and I would never, never have my child behave the way some of the adults have behaved in this room this evening. And if you think it's okay to behave the way you have this evening, when no one has been disrespectful during the course of this meeting in this, in these chambers? No, ma'am. I'll stay after this meeting as long as you need me to, out in the plaza to hear from everyone, and I will make myself available. But while we're here, we're conducting the people's business. I don't need applause. Thank you very much. I will provide that third vote of support that you need to have this agendized and discussed in a civil and public manner. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I hope my colleagues will join, all of them unanimously.
Do I have your support on the three elements? Okay, so we have our three votes.
Last word.
I wanted to agendize something. Resolution condemning the interference of outside agitators, including Antifa, the Revolutionary Communist Party, and the Proud Boys. I don't know what other group was out there. We can go back with the chief and find the intelligence as to who that was. Whoever they are, they cause problems in Glendale.
Absolutely. So let's put that on the new business agenda for two weeks from now. Okay? That's all that takes.
Mayor Bronson, two weeks from now, Councilmember Najarian will not be in attendance.
Can we just do it now?
No, no, no. We, it's got to go on the new business agenda. That's our process. And then we will, we will act on it. Okay. Very good.
At some point, when you're done, Mr. Mayor, get a, just get a motion to confirm the direction. It's already, you've made it, and council members concur, but we have a, just get a motion to agendize the item.
Okay. Well, I will move to agendize consideration of launching a city initiative to address dangerous divisive and hate speech in Glendale, as I outlined in my comments at the outset of this item.
With addition, with, with our comments as to yours.
Yes.
Okay. Yes. One second.
I can't support that exact language because in your comments, you tied hate to the parents.
No, I did not. I did not tie hate.
You said parents giving hate speech.
There's hate speech. Okay. When people are yelling out Armenian slurs, when people are yelling out groomer, when people are yelling out pedophile to large groups of people, that is hate speech. And that is what I'm condemning. I am not condemning a parent that goes to the board meeting or to any meeting, to this meeting, and expresses their opinion in a civil way. But if people are out there throwing slurs at whole groups of people, that is hate. And that is what, okay. Let's clear the chamber. I'm done. I'm done. We've given too many. Can we go to a recess, please? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Can we? Thank you. Can we... (audio cuts out) Okay, we are back. And let me try this. I'll put it this way, that I would request that staff bring back a report with options for us to, let's say, address the divisions in the community.
Mr. Mayor, you're on 12A still?
Yes.
The motion wasn't...
Address the divisions in the community and the upsurge in dangerous divisive and hate speech. Or do you not want that in there?
Can I recommend something?
Why don't you, okay.
We'd like a report that includes creating a human relations committee, working with the LA County Human Relations Committee. What was your third item?
Outreach to report hate speech and hate crime.
Outreach to educate our community on how to report hate. Is that sufficient?
How to report hate crime.
Hate speech and hate crime.
I think that using those words is divisive in themselves. And I think this human relations committee, which, as I said, we had many years ago because of vandalism to the synagogue, was not about hate speech. It was just about getting along in the community, being able to talk about our issues, our problems, and any divisiveness in the community that exists. Let's address it, and let's bring our community together on issues that are problematic at the time, something like that.
Wouldn't the human relations committee be doing that anyway?
Yes.
And maybe, and may I say, Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if we just say a human relations committee, let's let staff come back with what they would be dealing with, how it would be organized, et cetera. That's what the report would be. Let's us just say that we are in favor of a human relations committee to bring our community together.
To resolve tensions.
To resolve, right.
Okay, if that's where we are, then let's move forward with that. If we can get everybody to support that, I think we're in a better place. Okay? Do we have to vote, or can we take it by acclamation?
Progress is progress. This is, you know, I've grown up in this community. I remember having anti-Armenian and absolutely neo-Nazi flyers stuffed into our lockers. I know that there are many people of different backgrounds in this community who at various times have felt unwelcome because of the type of language and epithets and insults that are hurled at them. But if this is going to be an effort to try and... I don't know, there is, in my opinion, no divide between someone who decides to use a term to describe someone in a way that is not accepted, it is not civilized, it is demeaning and dehumanizing, right? I mean, I think that this got conflated with the demonstration that erupted into violence at the school district, but there are still matters in which there is right and wrong. You use certain words to describe certain people and groups? That's wrong.
And that's exactly what the human relations committee would address, Arty.
So I support it. I support it in, again, the spirit of moving forward, but this idea that somehow or another we're going to sugarcoat issues because, anyways...
It comes at an awkward time because of what just happened last week. Two weeks ago, I would have had no problem at all with that.
Then nothing should change now.
No, because the majority of the parents at GUSD have been accused of hurling the hate speech.
By who? Who's ever said a majority of the parents...
That's how they feel.
That's how they're misinterpreting what I've said. I've never said anything like that.
I understand, it might not be your intent.
I never called them a bigot. They've said that I called them a bigot.
Your post on my Glendale, your post on my Glendale talks about the parents using hate speech against the community.
Do I say "the" parents? I'm condemning those people that used hate speech against the community, and there were a lot. We heard it.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I will support the creation of the Human Relations Coalition discussion before this body, in which everyone can participate in to express their views. So I support it.
Okay.
We treat that as a motion from Councilmember Satrian with a friendly amendment and a second by Councilmember Devine.
Okay. Should we vote?
Our process requires a vote, correct?
Okay, let's have a vote.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Brotman?
Yes. Okay, and our next item.
Our next item is Discussion Item B, Request by the Jewish Federation of the Greater San Gabriel and Pomona Valleys to adopt a resolution opposing anti-Semitism. Brotman?
Okay. We were asked some time ago by the Jewish Federation of the Greater San Gabriel and Pomona Valleys to adopt a resolution condemning anti-Semitism and all forms of hatred. This is an initiative that they have. They are endeavoring to get every one of the 48 cities they cover to pass its resolutions. For just reference, I have handed to all of you an example resolution. This is one from the city of Alhambra. So far, a number of cities have passed similar resolutions. They're all slightly different, but mostly they're quite similar. Yes. Clermont, Upland, Monrovia, Alhambra, Sierra Madre, Temple City, San Gabriel, Diamond Bar, Whittier, Pasadena recently passed it, South Pasadena recently passed it. I think the timing is good, and I would have said this even last week before those flyers were thrown around northwest Glendale, but the White House, about two and a half weeks ago, released what it's calling the National Strategy to Counter Anti-Semitism. So I think this is timely. I think we should support the Jewish Federation and the other cities that are coming forward with this. Anti-Semitism, I would say, has not been at the forefront in this city, but there have been some incidents. I know that our rabbi, who I've spoken to about this, his congregation is quite fearful. They've had to beef up security, there've been threats, and I think it would be a good show of support if this council were to adopt such a resolution.
I would support this.
Will we clean up the numbers? So those numbers, let's say, of 3,697, is that LA County? Is that in Alhambra? Can't be in Alhambra.
This is just, and I don't have it now...
So let's just clean up those numbers. I'd like them to reflect.
I'm not proposing this exact resolution. I think we'll make our own resolution. I have about three or four examples. We can get all the examples if we want, and we can create one that suits us.
Yes, I'll move it.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, and let's have a vote on that, then.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Brotman?
Yes. And just for clarification again, because this process is a little bit new, so staff is going to come back with a report, with a form of resolution, then we can vote on it.
Correct.
Right, as an action item.
Correct.
Got it. Okay. All right, what is next?
Next is Discussion Item C, A Request to Agendize Review of the Zoning Code Provisions pertaining to Fences in Single Family Zones, and that's by Councilmember Devine.
Okay, all right.
Please.
Thank you. Okay, so I won't, I'm not going to be requesting that this item be agendized as community development is looking at our zoning codes for revision right now. Currently, residents can apply for variance for fences, and if in the process of tweaking our zoning codes, you know, an opportunity arises to make a change, you know, I look forward to seeing that, but as of now, I will rescind this request.
Okay, so there's no need to vote. Okay. Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Devine. And our next item?
Our next item is Oral Communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Do we have any calls?
I... No calls? Okay.
We have no calls?
We did have a call earlier, but it doesn't happen, it doesn't seem that we have one at the moment.
I guess that's it, because we, I guess we'll just, all right.
And we have no new business.
Oh, wait, one sec. They have some now for, sorry.
Okay.
It just came in now.
Okay. Okay.
Maybe some of the people that left their calls didn't respond.
Okay, we have our first caller, who's Gayanetee. Gayanet, you're on air. You have five minutes.
Okay, hi, this is Gayanet. Earlier in the meeting, all of the council members said that you guys can always contact us. We are service providers. These are our numbers. These are the things that we do. For 14 days, little children had to walk on oncoming traffic just to get to and from school. We had sent an email to all of the city members and asking them that there are these large bulky items that were left on the walkway towards the Glen Oaks Elementary School. And we had called and left messages, and the excuse... I'm sorry. For the 14 days, little children had to walk on oncoming traffic just to get to and from school. The excuse was that you only had two hands and don't have enough time for these stuff, but you guys have time to push your plastic spoon recycling agenda. Is there anything more important than our children walking to and from school by having to go around those bulky items? It really just doesn't make any sense what is so important about it as opposed to our children.
Okay. Before... Is that it? Is that your comment?
Yes.
Yes, before you hang up, I'd like to, because I don't recall ever getting such a message, and I'm looking around the dais and nobody has any recollection of getting such a message. Could you give us your name so we could perhaps look in our emails?
Sure. I will resend you the email.
Okay.
No problem.
Okay, because...
But I just wanted to say that, because it was such a scary situation for children to have to walk around the block and go off the oncoming traffic, it took 14 days until those bulky items were removed. What was so important for other things to get done during school days and during school gear that the kids could not use the safety of the sidewalk?
Right. And who did you report this to?
All of them, all of the Glendale City Council members.
No, we didn't receive anything.
Everybody.
Okay.
No problem. I will reforward the same email to all of you guys.
Did the caller, did she say that it was eventually removed?
Yes, two weeks later.
Okay.
For 14 days.
Okay. All right, good. Thank you.
Okay.
You know, I do want to comment on this because...
Under the Bridge by Glen Oaks Elementary.
I've gotten several emails I've shared with staff about the bulky item pickups, and I mean, I even mentioned it for my own street. I think there were some photos some residents had sent over that I had forwarded on that staff said that you guys were going to look into. I don't know what's going on, but I see the increase in number of bulky items just around our streets, and I've seen it increase in the last couple of years. So I don't know what it means that you're looking into, but, you know, could we have something back in memo form to see how we're addressing this? Because I see it across neighborhoods. It's not just... I mean, I didn't get that email, but I've gotten other emails. I forwarded on to staff to take a look, and it would be helpful.
You know, I agree. I've spoken about this. I know that we've had members of the community speak about it. I will say that whenever I have received a complaint from a resident or a business and I've told Public Works about it, it gets addressed usually on the same day. So it's very, you know, I'm not going to question the caller. I'm sure she probably sent it, you know, I'll take her at her word, but I will say that if we do receive a complaint, it's always addressed, and it's one of the reasons why I think we do have a great Public Works Department that is able to take care of these issues.
Yeah. And I had one the other day that I sent to Mr. Mroni, and it was cleared up that same day, I believe, so...
And I also had one at Columbus, I believe it was, and they were there cleaning it up immediately. So the thing is, I think the issue here is, it's too bad that the public has to contact a council member to get this done.
Yes.
That they should be able to call, and especially if it's a school, especially if it's a school area, that should be an immediate response. And I don't know what she's talking about, where someone said, you know, we don't have, we only have two hands or something. That's unacceptable, and I don't know that that was said or not, but I know when we request it, it's done, but when the public requests it, it should be done as well, especially around schools.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Mayor of City Council, you are absolutely correct. Councilmember Devine, our community members, our members of the public do not need to contact council members for action by, in this case, abandoned items to be picked up. We do have a system in place, and it works, but I'll let Mr. Mroni provide some more detail for the caller.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we do have, whenever a member of public contacts us, we follow up. It doesn't matter if it's through a City Council member or if they contact our department directly. It depends on whether it's city-related, or if it's city-related, we jump on it right away. If it's related to one of our commercial franchise haulers, we contact them, and if we feel that it's taking too long, we address it ourselves. But all requests are handled immediately as soon as we get the request.
And we, to add to that, we also have an app that folks can use. They don't have to send an email.
I think I'm more concerned about, it's not a matter of just somebody filing the complaint. I just see more bulky items around the city, and so I'm just trying to figure out, like, where we're missing something.
And if I may, to that point, we also have these hotspots that we've established throughout the city, and we continuously monitor those, and the commercial franchises are also monitoring these hotspots, but there's always additional hotspots that get added.
Okay. I don't want to let this bleed into a general discussion because it's not an agendized item. So, okay, thank you. Can we go to the next call?
Yes, our next caller is Sarah Morrison. Sarah, you're on air. You have five minutes.
Hi there. Okay, hi, so my name is Sarah Morrison. I'm a teacher and a parent in GUSD. I'm calling you, the City Council, today to talk about safe public schools because I believe that safe public schools are a reflection of a safe and peaceful city. So as a California public school teacher, I want to affirm that there is nothing crazy happening in GUSD. Providing safe, inclusive, and peaceful classrooms where all students of all backgrounds are seen for who they are, as they tell us they are, is a legal requirement for all California public school teachers. Recognizing LGBTQ plus people in our classroom curriculum is California law. This is per Ed Code, the Fair Act, and the California Constitution. And there's good reasons for these laws. Showing respect for students helps them learn academically. Lifting up marginalized people makes communities stronger. Learning about other people helps students, all of the students, navigate their own diverse classroom, their diverse city, Glendale, and their diverse country. So as a teacher and as a parent, I want to thank all of you who are standing in solidarity with GUSD educators as we continue the difficult work in which we have devoted our careers. California teachers need you to have our back. And I also want to thank everyone who bravely stands with GUSD students, especially our LGBTQ plus students, who are much better off when the adults in their lives, such as all of you, affirm them and protect them when their right to a safe and peaceful education is threatened. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our final caller is Ellen Davatian. Ellen, you're on air. You have five minutes.
Thank you so much for taking my call. First of all, previous caller, ma'am, it's not recognizing LGBTQ, it's shoving it down our throats, and we're sick of it. And Arti, you are not our father, sir. You sure do not have the right to discipline parents. You speak about how you were taught basic morals as a young boy. Well, you know what? That's what we are all trying to do, and we continue to do to our kids. But all of a sudden, this minority comes along with a radical agenda and tries to tear it all apart, and we will not keep silent. Arti, you have disappointed so many. And Mr. Dan, do you know how frustrating it is for us parents to only get one to two minutes and wait to be silenced by the very people we voted in? You know exactly what you posted on Facebook, and you need to stop going around your posts. Your message was directly to the parents, and you called them hate speech. Okay? You didn't want to hear what everybody else had to say. You didn't hear that from the beginning of the meeting, we were called Christian fascist, and we were chanted to go away, and our cup is full and it's overflowing. There comes a time where we will not be silenced any longer, okay? We're fed up, and that is now. So stop trying to silence us. When we get one to two minutes, and then you can turn us off and you can keep blabbing about whatever the hell you want to talk about. That is not right. We will not be silent. Thank you for the call.
Okay, anymore? That's it? Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I stand by what I said, and I move to adjourn.
Yeah. Thank you. We are adjourned, 11:21 PM.
We have a huge table for breakfast. Are you all right?
Eight o'clock, right?
Eight o'clock?